I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight, we're making a little bit of history with new cameras and TVs and stuff. So just bear with us that as we get everything worked out here and if somebody, we don't catch something, please raise your hand or whatever. See, do we have?
Why is that not breaking in the council?
Just trying to figure out who's all on.
Why is that not?
Okay, so with that, we'll go to approving the agenda. I would take a motion to approve.
Do you want to second?
Okay, there's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Sean. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number one is the Main Street Reconstruction Project Update. Mr. Cavett.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. First, I'll give you the update, and then the next item is to actually go through the modification of the construction contract, the change orders. So starting with the update, you know, to date, everything has been going well, as I've reported in the past, the project is progressing well, and obviously with the weather we've been having, it's been very helpful. We did have a little bit of a setback as of today. Actually, curbing was proposed as of Friday, and then there were some concerns about the subgrade, they postponed that curb work until today, and then ultimately between Mendat and the contractor, they had to pull the plug on the curbing. They had some concerns about how the subgrade, the roadbed is setting up on the segment of road between First Avenue Southwest up until about Central Avenue, so from like the Kubish Furniture Corner up until just before Central. So Mendat and the contractor evaluating it, they're gonna try some, actually some things with some fabric and some GeoGrid as it's called, some things to help stabilize the subgrade. What we found is that because of this way this downtown probably developed 100 and some years ago, there's some variability of soils that is having an effect on how the road is setting up. So, of course, you know, we're building this road for the long term, and we want to make sure it's done right. So that portion of the projects probably, again, is gonna have a little bit of a setback. We don't know if, you know, maybe we'll still see curb yet this week. We'll know more, of course, in a few days. The rest of the utility work, that has been going quite well. They've been starting up, they're east of First Avenue, northeast, they're heading up towards Columbus with Main, and Sanitary Main and Water Main, and then services here over the next week. Again, that's a stretch that when they get to the Columbus Avenue intersection, that sanitary is pretty deep, so it'll go a pretty slow process. Probably, that's probably the big key, just a quick update, we've got about 92 people that are signed up to get the text message alerts, so I think that's been helpful. I do want to bring up too, there was, and I think most of you probably received an email, there was a complaint from one resident regarding the, what they felt was not sufficient notice to, for the water shut off that was planned for Monday. Notices were sent out on, handed out on midday on Friday for a shut off Monday morning. The policy that's pretty much been standard for over all the years and is in the contract is basically a 20, minimum 24-hour notice to residential properties, and that's pretty much what we've seen throughout this project. So I don't know, again, if, at this point, it's not something we would be proposing to change, and one comment I've heard too is if we go out too far, people start to forget what day the shut off was planned for. Other than that, if you haven't checked out, there's a cool photo that was put on the update that went out. What I showed was kind of interesting, it was the 1931 photo when they were installing storm sewer, and the 1921 photo, or 2021 photo from when they're installing right now. And in the photo, you can actually see the clay pipe that's being pulled out, the clay pipe that was put back, put in in 1931, it's coming out now, so it's kind of, it was an interesting photo. Pretty much all I have for update, is there anything, I guess, questions or comments you've received regarding the project or progress, I guess, at this point?
Yeah, Chris, is this the final for the asbestos?
There is a little bit more that has to come out at the intersection of Columbus. It was the area that they couldn't get to until they could actually close Columbus, and I think they might have finished it on Friday. I don't, okay. Yeah, so that's, the last of it should be out.
Okay, so the 51, is that $51,400 or $540?
That is a lump sum, what they proposed to basically remove it all.
And the remainder, the...
The original bid on that item was actually 61, so the 59 and change is an addition, again, and you can, we'll get to that point, you can see from the photos how much more complex it was from what was planned.
So the total on the change orders today is 73,538?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing on, nothing more about the update, do you want to start going through the change orders?
Sure, yes. Okay, so there are four change orders, numbers 13 through 16, and I'll go, kind of go quick through each one of those, and if there's questions on them, we can cover them in a little more detail. Though, change order 13 is an item that is actually related to the building with structural concerns, and when I say that is, there was a segment of Water Main that needed to be installed on Central Avenue South, so alongside that west wall that is of concern. And the reason for the proposed Water Main extension was to basically create a, provide clearance between the storm sewer and the Water Main. Minnesota Department of Health Standards requires a minimum of 10-foot clearance between sanitary and/or storm sewer from Water Main. And so to do that, we had proposed to chase the Water Main back to where the alignment would come out, back out to Main Street, maintaining that 10-foot of clearance, but again, would require digging, excavation, and backfilling below that west wall, which again is concerned. So in the concern of worker safety, as well as the public and the building, we came up with an improvised design which would replace the storm sewer with a pressure grade, pressure gasketed Water Main, which is allowed by the Department of Health, which would allow the clearance between Water Main and storm sewer to be less than the 10 feet required. To do that, it requires us to put in a PVC 30-inch PVC pipe that would be used for storm sewer. That pipe is more costly. What we're showing there, again, is the cost was $6,369. We had discussions with Mendat, we proposed to split that cost 50/50 between city and state, because again, it is a storm item, but it is because of the water, and then it would get that portion, that portion would be covered by the Water Fund, that 50% share. Any questions on 13?
Chris, I have one, why wouldn't the building's owner, if we have to make this, be responsible for at least a portion of it, I would think, if not all of it? I mean...
Well, I think that's a discussion for, certainly a valid discussion for later, but obviously between us, Mendat, and the contractor, we have to, ultimately, that portion has got to fall on the city. Now, if the city wishes to try to pursue that with the property owner, you know, I think, again, that's kind of a separate transaction.
Okay, well, I don't want it to hold up the project at all, but I, my personal feeling is I'd like to see us maybe try to recoup some of those extra tax dollars that we're doing for that building.
Yeah. So, and there will be some additional items, there's an item that we tried to get onto this, into this resolution, there'll be some additional costs, again, related to that building for precondition surveys and for sand backfill in the utility trenches. We couldn't quantify those numbers, there were still a few items that were hanging in the air, those will also be coming forward, and those would also be worthy of discussion between the city and the property owner. I think that'll be a good discussion, again, that would need to go through the city attorney's office. It's not a straightforward item, I think, as it applies to Minnesota statutes 429. Again, a little bit over my head, and definitely worthy of discussion with the city attorney.
Thank you.
Change order 14, this is the big one, $51,000, it looks like I'm missing a digit there, my apologies, but $59,041.24. Basically, this is an additional cost for the removal of the vault or duct system for the asbestos steam pipe. This pipe was located, this duct system was actually located under the south curb line of Main Street. What was anticipated was, it was anticipated was just going to be one, a single pipe, which is what we've seen in the past, asbestos coated pipe. When it got exposed, obviously, it was a more complex duct system, it required the removal of the surface, that was not considered asbestos containing material, but the pipe, the return pipe, the walls on the duct system and the concrete floor, so it ended up being a significant amount of material that had to be removed as asbestos containing material, disposed of accordingly, et cetera. As noted, the pipe, as it was bid, was expected to be about $61,000. The amount of material that ended up having to be removed ended up being about four to five times the volume, and so they had proposed an additional cost of that $59,000 and change, so. And if you, yeah, you've got your gender report, you've got the photos in there that kind of show the complex that was. I know in the past, as I understand it, the staff had only seen the pipe itself in past projects, that the intersection and the duct system was not anticipated.
Chris, can you bring those pictures up for the benefit of the audience?
I can't, but I don't know...
I'll give you permission, Chris.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Now, if you can expand those a bit so they can show up a little bit better.
Yeah, yeah, try to go to full screen and see what I've got here. Um, I've got nothing. That didn't work. So you can see it? Oh, there we go, let's try this, I'll try to zoom in, there we go. So it is an gender report, but obviously, for the sake of the public, again, this is the steam line, there's a return line, and it was like a clay tile system on the sides, there was a clay tile with steel like angle irons that supported the lids on top, and I believe the top was not considered asbestos containing material, but literally everything else was, the sides, the pipe, the return pipe, and then the concrete floor, all had to be carefully abated, abated and removed and disposed of according to environmental standards.
Would that be considered friable then, in the condition that you got the picture?
Correct, correct. And that was just, you can see in some of these areas where the pipe was still wrapped pretty good, but you can see areas where the stuff had fallen apart, and it was laying basically in the bottom, bottom of the duct, as I understand it. So that's why they, there was an environmental consultant that was on the job on behalf of the state, the state and the city, that determined where, what had to be disposed of and what didn't have to, or could be disposed of conventionally. So on that cost, it was 100% of city cost, because it is basically a city utility, wasn't, did not belong to the DOT.
Does that get assigned then further to the utilities, or just a general obligation for the city?
Yeah, that's really up to the city, I think, discussions that Mike and I had, that really, it just seems like that's an overall city cost, it's been there a long time.
Okay. It would not go to the water or the electric utilities? Okay.
Unless Bruce wanted to volunteer to take it.
We can't see his face and how he reacted to that.
I could see, it was small, but I could see a smile. The other items were, I guess, yeah, any questions on that one?
No.
So the other items were, change order 15, I guess I'll still share my screen here if you want me to keep it up, again, if that makes sense, or...
Yeah, go ahead, keep it up.
So 15 was, so this is one that, as I mentioned, the sanitary sewer, as it crests, or goes to the crest of the hill at Columbus Avenue, actually reaches just, just over 20 feet in depth. From an industry standard, it's kind of common that once you're over about 10, 20 feet deep, you start to question whether you should upgrade the pipe. During the design, it was, we looked at it, we looked at where the depths were at, we looked at the standards when it comes to specifications from the suppliers, and concluded that, you know, the SDR 35 pipe was acceptable. But when we got into the, you know, we got to the point where we're planning this, having discussions with the contractor, we were kind of given some more to think about, and really, you know, the one thing is, the, if you look at where this pipe is, you know, we're under a major trunk highway, we're a little over 20 feet deep, it's kind of the last place we really want to have a problem. You know, we have a contractor warranty for two years, and then after that, you know, the city has this pipe, this sanitary system for the long term, and it really started to think, that given where it's at, it's the last place we want to have an issue, whether that be the contract within the contractor two-year warranty, or if it's somewhere further down the line. You know, we've got sanitary sewer services that'll have dropped or have drops, and there's a lot of forces on those, and so, so after discussions with the contractor, we got a quote from them to basically provide a SDR 26 pipe, which is a heavier duty pipe, thicker grade pipe, stronger pipe, that would be installed basically through this deep stretch, and they were willing to do it at no markup cost, basically just the cost of, the additional cost, the upgraded cost for the pipe. Definitely is recommended, it definitely is in the best interest of the city in the long term, again, given where it's at under a major trunk highway, to upgrade this pipe, and the material cost to do that was the $5,228, which is pretty small in the overall cost of the sanitary sewer portion of this project, so. And then, again, would be 100% city, out of the sanitary sewer fund, so. Any questions on that item? The last item, pretty straightforward, this is 100% Mendat item, but down at the gas station at the corner of First and Main, that sense is now longer a gas station, the pumps have been taken out, there's a sign, his sign was always encroaching, and Mendat had had a lot of conversations with him about getting that out of there, I think he took the sign down, but the post was still there, and as they determined, it really was in the best interest of the DOT, and basically installing the sidewalk and maintaining the pedestrian access route to get rid of the signpost, puddings, et cetera, and the DOT was willing to do that at no cost to him. This change order is 100% from the city at $2900, so do that. So the total, the total of all the change orders here tonight is $73,538.24. And we want to point out, it's summarized on that table, it gives you a good idea of all the change orders to date, and the totals at the bottom, as well as the percent of the original contract they are. So total, total to date, again, some of this is Mendat costs, Mendat's about 0.8%, the city's portion of the project is also about 0.8%. It's well within our contingencies to date, we are, of course, expecting more change orders, but we are also expecting, I know we're going to expect at least one change order that's going to be our deduct as well, so to date, I think we're sitting pretty good when it comes to change orders. Again, we expect more in the future, but I like to think we've gotten through some of the worst of the issues to date, so.
So how much is the contingency fund?
Typically, we'll budget somewhere around 5%, at least estimate it, and I know Mike can probably expand on that as well, so...
So the total cost?
Yeah. But our share of the, our share of our costs, and Mendat handles contingencies a little different way, but again, that's their portion of the project, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Cavett? From the council or from the online audience? Okay, hearing none, I would look for somebody to offer the resolution in front of you, 21-05-17-01.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21-05-17-01 to encompass the change orders 13 through 16.
Second.
And Rick seconded it? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is approval of the resolution, Kevin Cassidy, General Manager of NPACCA. There he is.
Hey, Kevin.
Hi, hey, city. So I guess I can go into some details on the project, there were a number of documents that might help me, help me complete and supply you guys, so.
Go ahead.
Well, basically, what we're going to be doing is removing the old refrigerant from the cooling plant and ice ring, so we'll be replacing it with a compliant refrigerant that is not on any EPA phase-out list, and is endorsed by both the supplier and technicians that we use to service the plant, as well as the NHL. So the refrigerant we're switching to is a 449 blend, and it's being used in quite a few facilities, and it's commonly used to switch from the R22, because it basically performs very similar to the R22, and the change out for it just requires the replacement of some seals and filters and some other smaller components, and then, yeah, so it's a pretty easy change out in terms of things, the big impact and cost comes with the replacements of the refrigerants, it's about 800 pounds, so the total cost of the project is approximately $35,000. If we receive approval from the state to get this grant, it'll be, it'll be half, so we'll do a one-to-one match of that, of 17.5 from our general fund, and then the mighty X grant would supply 17,500 for a total of $35,000. So safety of refrigeration is performing the work, they're the ones that'll come in and safety test the system and make sure everything's operational and good to go before they leave the project. I supplied the quote for that, I also supplied a savings account statement where I made a transfer in of $35,000 from our general fund to show that we have the liquid assets to complete the project. Yeah, so that's the summary of the project, are there any questions?
Pretty straightforward, is it required by the state to do this?
Yeah, so the R22 is a part of a phase-out program right now, 2015 is when they stopped manufacturing the refrigerants, and so we've been operating that refrigerant that's no longer in production for six years now. So as a part of those requirements, you know, they offer grants to help facilities that are in our position get through the large overhead of costs to change out. The R22 has been deemed too high of global warming potential, and yeah, so that was their big reason to phasing it out, so that's, that's the reason for the switch, is the requirement from the government. Also, we are seeing the refrigerant price rise as, you know, they're, we're producing, so the supply in the world is going down, and so we're going to switch to a refrigerant that should be more affordable over the course of time for us.
Okay. Mayor? Yes? If I could add, the reason that the city has to be involved, as you read through the resolution and the materials that we've provided to you, is that the funding, which comes from the state of Minnesota via the state bonding funding, can only be given to local units of government, and so as the LGU, working with the New Prairie Community Center Association, we obviously have an existing lease with them as well, that we have to become involved in the process with them, that the grant funds would obviously come to us, the community center group would obviously incur that, and then we submit for reimbursement, and when that comes back to us, then we would reimburse them for that, which is why we kind of have to go through all of these gyrations.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 21-05-17-02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce made the second, is there any other discussion?
Who the hell is she got an extra 20 seconds?
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Who seconded that motion?
Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, emergency repairs to City Hall building entrance. Ken, it looks like it's yours.
Yep, all right, we're just going to get my screen popped up on here for you. Is it showing up now, Mitch? There we go. All right, so I'm going to have a little backup from Matt Renda as needed, and then Building Fest Chad Lunders also on, if we need to go back to that, but I'm going to give an overview, some photos here to show with you as well, he also had in the packet, but a little history background of City Hall, so this building was built in 1939, it was most recently renovated, major renovation in 1987. We're not sure exactly what kind of work was done at that time to the exterior of the building, other than we know the windows were replaced throughout the building, but we think it's been at least since 1987 since any tuck pointing of the brickwork has been done, which is 34 years ago.
There wasn't any.
Okay, so it's even older than that.
Yeah.
So we knew it had been quite a while for any, any work that had been done in So we knew it had been quite a while for, for any, any work that had been done in the exterior other than those windows. So in the past couple of years, and I think this got brought up at a budget workshop two or three years ago, if I remember correctly, but we had noticed some issues of the front parapet, basically the front door right off Central, and some cracking of bricks and, and some mortar that was missing. And we've just been watching it since that time. And it kind of came to additional concern we had. And Puck Works Director Glenn Stika and Chad Lunder actually, our building official, actually worked to get a structural engineer, this is Gene Dwyer from LS Engineers and his, one of his pages from his review back in early part of twenty-twenty-one. Took a look at the whole building in general, just kind of a cursory review of the visual look at the outside of the building. One particular area of concern was the, where the flagpole was in the front of City Hall, right above the door to Central Avenue. And his report noted that as well. His report said remove flagpole. So we actually did remove the flagpole immediately when that was reported to us. And then following this report and our meeting with Mr. Dwyer, we sought these quotes to conduct what we're determining to be emergency repairs to that front parapet. And then additionally, it would carry through that tuck pointing all the way down to the base floor in that front area there. That includes brick and then the limestone or casota stone block that's around that facade there. So that's, was really the key concern that we needed to get taken care of right of way. And basically what it will entail is removing the parapet. Let me go to a second photo here. We got kind of the backside of the parapet, a lot of the, you can actually see the mortar laying down in a pile on the back. The flagpole is attached to that and in heavy winds, it was a pretty big concern that that was going to cause more immediate failure of that parapet. So that's why we took the flagpole off right away. But essentially rebuilding this area that extends above the roof of the building and then re-tuck pointing all the way down is what we're proposing, we're having. You look at tonight with these proposals. So the first one was from Simon Brick and Stone for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And then the second one was Building Restoration Corporation, and that was twenty-nine thousand one oh four. And then there was additional for mobilization and other incidentals. And we didn't even have the contractor break that out fully because they were well over and beyond the quote from, or proposal from Simon. One other thing to note, and I want to go back to Mr. Dwyer's letter here and kind of his findings. So while they're doing the repair work and while they're actually demoing, we need to have Mr. Dwyer on site to take a look at the work that's being done. And then even in addition to that front parapet, there's a couple of other test areas where we want to, while the contractors here, have them look at areas on the front of the bill, actually on all sides of the building to determine some future work that needs to be done to the building and actually see what's behind the brick in these areas. So we're anticipating up to ten different test areas at about five hundred dollars per test area. And that would be the proposal from Simon to do those ten test areas for not to exceed five thousand dollars. In addition to a twenty-two hundred dollar lump sum from LS Engineers to be on site, look at the test areas and then look at the repair work when that's being done on the front of the building. So all told, that work with total, with Simon doing the work and LS Engineers reviewing it and then looking at these test areas in total, twenty-nine thousand twenty-nine dollars. I did note in the repair that we do have ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars in a repair or in a reserve fund specifically for the repair of City Hall. So we do have funds to cover this. The one thing to point out, so these test areas, some of them are actually on these front columns, for example, on the front elevation of Central Avenue. And I don't have the photos of other portions of the building along the police garage and parks garage side as well. We have some areas of delaminating metal that's underneath the brick above some of the doorways. So that's what that test work will determine, kind of the extent of what's going on under there. But for now, the key concern is the front parapet area. Here's some more pictures of the very top of that front parapet that the engineer had taken. You can see this brick kind of leaning outward. Some old cock had been put in the brick over time. But obviously, you know, the mortar is missing. You can see these gaps here in these areas. And then that last photo is just another elevation, that would be on that same page. But again, our immediate concern is this front area here. And we'd like to get that immediately underway and repaired so we can get that in a safe condition once again. And it'll be put back exactly the way it looked. Some of the brick that they may have to patch in, they'll match as closely as they can. But it may not be one hundred percent in total match, but they will do their best job that they are able to, as noted in their proposal. But it's kind of what we got going on here. And like I said, we'd been watching it for a couple of years and it's got to the point, particularly with the engineer looking at it, that, yeah, we need to, we need to get this done. And there's still more work to be done at City Hall. And, you know, that might lead into redoing the windows again and, you know, tuck pointing the whole building. But that's to be determined. And a little bit of this test work will help, help guide that further scope of work in the future here. But that could be upwards of, you know, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand or more. But we just need to get taken care of this front area here to start with.
Ken, what's the purpose of the parapet?
Purpose of the parapet, other than holding the flagpole and kind of being an architectural feature, I don't think it really has a feature.
It actually does.
We just, couldn't we just get rid of it?
Designed it so that, it's called the Vercelli effect, so that the air moves around it. But that's, and then you put your scuffers in and there is a purpose for them.
Would it be less expensive just to have it removed?
Well, we had talked about that, but we felt that there is a historical nature to City Hall. I don't know, and I don't really want to be the one to destroy the, the look of the building. This was a WPA building from its construction. You know, it is eligible as a historic place. It is not on the register currently, obviously. But I would hate to see the, the look of the building go away. I don't know that we would save that much by not redoing that. We still do need to tuck point and obviously have to replace the cap and everything on there. It's a feature of the building, you know, kind of more than anything.
There's about a seven thousand dollar difference between these companies. Is there anything that we can use to, to decide besides just the price? I mean, I don't want to say twenty-one thousand and then a cheap job getting done and.
No, we, we believe they're very well qualified to do the work. And we simply sought these two proposals to, you know, see that comparable. But no, just because Simon's the low bidder doesn't mean that it's a discount bid by any means. It's a good bid, very well qualified to do that work. They actually were doing some work on the back of Net Clinic recently here. So they work on old buildings and are familiar with New Prague. Not to say that Building Restoration couldn't do it either, but I think their mobilization is a little less due to the fact that they're a little closer by than the other one from the Twin Cities area. But yeah, more than qualified to do it.
Let alone the money, just that they're a local business too, so. And they're working currently, Rick, on the memorial too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Can we, just to Maggie's point, Ken? I mean, if we were to just take that down first and then wait to see what perhaps the other ten test areas are going to do and kind of lump it all into one big project? Because I was thinking the exact same thing. I don't know why we'd have to keep that or rebuild it if, if there's some cost savings. And since we don't know what those other ten test areas are going to do, could we remove it for the time being for the safety issue, but then hold off until we see what maybe the whole encompassing investigation pulls out from, from those other test areas?
Yep, that's actually probably a good question for Chad and even Matt a little bit. Mitch, could you go back to go-to meeting real quick? Uh, Matt or Chad, can you hear the discussion? Obviously have been. Have any thought on, you know, taking that parapet off and then seeing what the test areas find? Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Well, the one thing I will say is the, you will have a roof issue at that point when I talk about. It's a rubber roof, so you're going to have to probably call Neiman's or call a roofing company to see what it would cost to redo the roofing part in that corner. That's a big change, I would say.
Chad?
Yeah, the, the expense of it isn't going to change necessarily from doing this work. The, Simon did do a proposal also. They both did proposals for the entire amount of work. So it's not going to deduct from cost just to take it down. Cause you'd end up with a, you'd actually end up with another expense of now recapping it and protecting the roof line and the wall line from water intrusion, so.
Okay. That makes sense then.
Yeah, so we broke it down for that fact that they, they did give bids for the entire project. We just took out these parts and put that in there. So it's actually not going to save any money just to take it down temporarily.
Okay, thanks guys.
Any other questions or discussion?
I don't have any questions particularly on this twenty-one thousand eight twenty-nine. But I'm just going to comment, I agree with you on the historical nature of the building. However, the building's already been remodeled kind of pat and changed. The historical nature of the building's changed significantly since it was built. And obviously, we have no fire trucks anymore in the building. And some of the window designs out. The city never followed an historical preservation
Yeah.
tacked in the past. So to do it now is, you know, has to, probably requires a little more thinking to see if you really want to follow that when we're already, that, those cows have left the barn kind of in some ways, but.
And I think, yeah, to your point, the garage doors for the fire trucks off Central obviously replaced by windows. I guess I'm more looking at it from the standpoint of the overall outline of the building shape, certainly facing Central. And then on both ends, obviously, we have filled in some of the windows, particularly on this facade. So no, I, I understand your point, but.
The, the other comment I guess I'd bring up in conjunction with some of the other things we talked about in the past and really our strategic thinking going forward is, what you're referring to that Glenn did in December, was that the, that wasn't really the building assessment study project that we've had on the burners for the last couple of years that we haven't gotten to?
This was just to look at the front of the building because we had concerns that were becoming more immediate and we needed to address those. And since the engineer was here, they just took a look around the building to say, hey, are there any other areas of immediate concern? Knowing that, yeah, there needs to be a full
Yeah, I think that.
Analysis and.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're going to speak more to the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars question. I think that is where, I guess I would have a little more comment about doing a full range study to understand why we are setting so much money aside for a new City Hall and then wanting to put two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars into this building.
Saying that exactly either. If we were going to bring just the maintenance back up in the building, just to tuck point and do some of those other things, that's probably the higher end of what it would cost. But just to give you an idea that this isn't the end solution to, you know, maintain the building or get it up to current maintenance, I guess.
Right, I, I think the, the narrative talked about recommending that these be budgeted for now. But to me, I think we need to have a lot more thought and discussion before we start budgeting two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
No, that, the intent would be, would be to undertake a more defined technical analysis to take a look at everything from tuck pointing to windows to heating cooling systems, all of that, so that you've got a comprehensive idea of what might make up those estimated dollars that Ken is referring to. And that we know in the, the physical part of the building, that's one thing. But obviously upgrading windows, if that were to be done. And, you know, how to handle the heating cooling systems, which have been bifurcated in a number of places in this building based on the change that has occurred over the years. And then taking a look at some of the additions that have been added on, on the west side as far as the different parking garages, is what is it going to take to, to bring this facility up to whatever standards we would define and attempt to put forth so that you do have a comprehensive look at that total cost before we would attempt to go anywhere else, Bruce?
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, just to verify, this twenty-one thousand eight twenty-nine will take care of every current existing safety issue?
The immediate safety issues at the front of the building.
And there will be no other safety issues that are being deferred?
Well, there could be other issues that could come up with these test areas. I think the biggest concern, Chad, you could probably comment on, or Matt even for that matter, over by the parks and police side. But we kind of need to do these test areas to really see what's going on behind there.
Matthew.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead, man.
Without doing these test bits, we are kind of in the blind. We, we have an ideal, we think it's going on, but without doing these test bits, we have, we don't know what's going on. So we might determine that there's not really much of an issue and there won't be much minor work. But I think we're anticipating the worst, but we don't know that until we start digging into it.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. The, the thought is, is on the front by the windows, the old fire doors, whatever. The, the three parts that are marked was, they just want to open up a test site so they can see if, if it's really what they think it is. They, they feel that it's the, there's structural beams that are in there, steel beams. And they've just, they've gotten water on and whatever and, and created an issue. They think that they might be able to recode those or do something of the sort and then fix the brick from there. The backside by the police station and the parks windows, that, those in theory, hopefully are, are more just a steel lento that's, that's welded to what's up there right now just to hold everything. Structurally, probably not a huge deal, but without opening test ports, they, they can't. But they are severely delaminated, so they, you know. I guess we'll find out once it's opened up.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other ways, there's a recommendation to accept the, or to select Simon Brick and Stone to complete the emergency repairs and then to test those areas for a total cost of twenty-nine thousand twenty-nine dollars. Make the motion. Okay, Sean makes the motion.
I'll second.
And Maggie seconds it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Mitch, can you leave go-to meeting up and I'll just present right through there?
All right, up next is consideration of land exchange at five-eleven Cottonwood Lane.
All right, let me get the correct drawings open here.
Okay. And I see we have Kyle.
Yes, I think they had.
There.
Kyle along.
Both of them there.
Okay, perfect.
Hi.
Welcome.
All right, so I'm going to put some maps up so you can take a look at.
Yep.
Hopefully Kyle and Emily, you can follow along here as well. So I'm going to kind of focus on the northeast side of the property here. All right, so this particular request is being brought to you by Kyle and Emily Keener. This past winter, they had actually contacted us about replacing the shed that's on their property. And I looked at it from a planning and zoning standpoint and noticed that, boy, half of it's actually sitting off of their property and partially on city pond property and partially on their own property. And then noticed the fence and a couple other abnormal, I'll just call it a jagged lot line, I guess, near that pond that is a little unusual. Hadn't looked into that in any detail previously. So this is being winter time and said, you know, we should take a look at this in the field when spring rolls around. So back on April twenty-sixth, Matt Renda and I did actually visit with the Keeners. um, did actually visit with the Keeners out on, uh, their property and walked, uh, through the area to just see what we had going on in the field. Our main concern from the city's standpoint was, um, that we have an ability to get in and around that pond to do maintenance. Um, obviously with the location of the fence on city property, um, actually somewhat significantly, um, not so much the shed being, uh, a hindrance to getting in around the pond, but that fence is really the major issue, but the Keeners, uh, bought the property with that fence in place and with the shed in place, so, you know, they, they bought into that, um, situation. And then one other thing to note that we have been marking the property lines along all these ponds in the city, uh, with property markers and um, I don't know the exact date, Matt, you could probably, uh, tell the exact time, but, um, one of the stakes we were gonna put, if you can see where I'm highlighting on the, the map here, uh, would have looked to appeared to be in the middle of their backyard. Um, so that was another thing that was brought up and it's like, okay, this is an unusual, um, situation with this lot line, um, kinda jogging uh, through the area, didn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense. I don't know from the plat, uh, being from the nineties, why it was drawn that way particularly, but um, when Matt and I were on site, we felt this would be a good opportunity to, um, basically revisit the lot line, uh, revisit some of the, uh, what we felt to be, uh, basically just over, uh, sized easements. This, uh, dotted yellow line on the map here is actually the easement line. That's another, uh, you know, depending on where you're looking at this, thirty feet plus beyond the lot line, um, for an easement area to get in and do maintenance. Um, so we, we took kind of a comprehensive look at this from staff level and saying, hey, what makes sense here? What would give, uh, the Keeners, uh, the best use of their yard and maintain our ability to, um, maintain not only the creek and the pond, um, uh, for, for the long term, but just make it less confusing. We put our stakes up where our property line is and, and, uh, you know, make it very clear for everybody. So this was existing conditions. Um, this is where their shed would've had to have gone, uh, based on those setbacks, um, or actually to be out of the easement area with their current property lines. Their property line is in blue. Um, so it really pushed it way in the, the, what appeared to be in the middle of the yard, uh, but would be meeting all the setbacks, so. Um, this next map I'll pull up here. Um, this is actually a drawing of the plat as well, showing those, um, easements. You can see the thirty-foot easement off that, uh, east property line and then just how the other line kinda jogs through that area, but probably the best map that we have to take a look at here is really, um, this one right here, trying to get at, um, straightening out this lot line by what we're terming, um, after talking to the city attorney, which would be, um, a land exchange situation. Did that just turn off? Okay. Uh, land exchange situation, so this property that's in yellow right now is actually owned, uh, by the property owners. It's about seven hundred and fifteen square feet. And this area in orange is owned by, um, the city, um, actually at this current time. It's about five hundred and thirty-nine square feet. So we propose, our proposal is to flip-flop those, which would create just a straight line from, um, this corner, uh, back over towards the, um, drainage ditch area. And then the area in purple would be an area that is kinda what we've determined to be, uh, unnecessary or extra drainage utility easement that really would not be needed. Um, after that land swap, we've got plenty of land, um, beyond these areas allow us to maintain that pond area. Basically leaves ten plus feet, uh, to get in and around that pond, plenty of room to move around, do what we need to do. Um, so really that's the, the, the main things going on here is flip-flopping the red or the, uh, orange and yellow properties between the city and the Keeners and then the city would vacate, um, this extraneous, um, drainage utility easement area that's shown in the purple hatching. Couple of things to point out on here. Um, there's a storm line that runs down, uh, their northern property line to the pond and there's also a catch basin and another storm line, uh, immediately behind the, uh, existing location of the shed that drain into that, um, stormwater pond as well. So what you end up with if, uh, you would go with what staff is recommending to be done in this land exchange and partial drainage utility, um, easement is, uh, the new lot line for the Keeners, um, shown in, uh, red, very much straightens that out. Gives a very easily defined area where the city can mark property line corners and then, um, gives them an area not quite as far back to put that shed, uh, but, um, meeting all the setbacks in this general vicinity of lot would be just fine. And then they would have to relocate their fence out of, uh, the area that would be beyond that red line. And that would, you know, kinda clean up the area, I guess, so to say. Um, and like I said, Matt Renda and I, uh, kinda came up with this after, uh, meeting on the site with the Keeners and, um, there would be some cost to them um, to pay for the, uh, development of the land exchange agreement and also for, um, some survey work that could total and we're estimating it could be above, could be below of about forty-three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, but, um, they are aware of those costs to do that and, um, I can't say that we've done a land exchange previously. We've vacated drainage utilities before, um, or at least partially or fully, I should say. Uh, but really do feel this would be a beneficial, um, win-win for both parties here. Um, Matt, I don't know if you had any other comment you would like to make at this point, but, um, we kinda worked on this for, uh, a couple of days to get this put together with these drawings, so that, um, kinda made sense to us and ultimately, um, in bringing it to you here tonight. Uh, really what we're looking for is if it seems like a reasonable request, we would have Scott Riggs help develop an agreement and then survey work would need to be done again on the, uh, residence, um, cost to do that, but we would help coordinate that necessary work to do that. Let's really, I have for staff's report on that.
Ken, is, this is a temporary, uh, not a permanent structure then?
The shed is, no, it's not got footings.
There was never a permit then, it didn't need a permit.
It would not have needed a permit.
So that's why it, it just got placed in this location.
Very likely.
And, and I support the idea and everything, but we, they could resolve the issue just by moving it without all of this as well, but the city's benefiting and that's the rationale behind this.
That is the rationale, yep.
Okay.
Just future.
Just so we're not setting a precedent that people were just doing this because someone sticks a building in a place that's not supposed to be there and I realize they didn't do it. But, uh, when I think about this, there, it, it, there should've been a title insurance. If it was permanent, they should've raised a lot of red flags along the way and we shouldn't have seen this.
I don't know that anybody exactly knew where the property line was. Not an excuse by any means, you know, to, to, uh, you know, justify it one way or the other. Um, but the other thing from our standpoint is too that it just makes it easier for even when staff goes out there to look at it. We would've had signs all over the place trying to mark where that property line kinda jogs in and out of there and this just makes it easier where they can put one up on the corner, um, this red corner right here and then another one over on this side and then they know it's a straight line, uh, clear through there. So it, it just helps staff when they're doing maintenance as well. And I don't know if the Keeners would put a fence back up along that lot line or not, they'd have to answer that, but, um, again, the premise was that, you know, we do currently have an easement over a majority of this area, so, um, that's why it is on the property owner's dime cover that rather than ours and really in the end it does help clarify it.
Then the only other question I, I guess I had, and I said I support it, but, um, vacating these drainage easements, does that reduce the ability to get equipment in there to clean the ditch?
No, we still believe this would be adequate. Matt, I don't know if you wanna comment with what we, uh, clean the ditch and the pond areas with? You're still on, hopefully?
Yep, so what we're proposing is more than adequate for us to do our maintenance around there. Our goal all, all the time is to build a drive around, uh, the ponds with a small UTV and this is more than enough to do all that. The issue we had before is that little corner that technically was not our property. If we got that corner, that little triangle, um, that just makes it almost accessible to get all the way around that pond now.
Yeah.
Again, with Ken, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, I'm more referring to the ditch area where it looks like we're giving up ten or twelve feet and, you know, if the slope accommodates.
Or there's thirty feet in there, is there?
Just thirty?
Thirty feet for the current easement. This would cut it back, oh, to about fifteen to twenty feet.
Okay, and that's plenty even with the slope of the ditch to get it.
Yes, right where that fence line is currently.
Okay, thank you.
We've done maintenance on that, um, ditch. Probably a few years ago, we actually had a little wash away. It was more than adequate to get equipment on that side if we needed to and actually on that time we were able to reach from, uh, the east side of the creek, but no, that fifteen feet is more than enough for us to do our maintenance.
Thank you.
The location of that shed in this picture, Ken, I think, uh, as we talked, is that's just a general location. It would still have to meet setbacks.
That's correct.
From the revised property line if it was, uh, if this, if this was put together. This isn't showing it necessarily off the setbacks. Okay. Any other questions? Kyle, do you have any? Or?
I, I don't think so. Um, no, I think that's a general question. I mean, I was gonna talk to Ken too. I mean, I understand this is kinda the initial, uh, does this make sense from the city's perspective or not? Um, you know, if we look at that property line kind of on the, the northeast side, um, even if we could push that out, you know, another five or six feet from there, that would be even better just kinda the way the layout of the lot is, but I understand that, you know, we can talk about that or I don't know what the, what the correct process to look at that is too, but if you looked at kinda the, the furthest, if you look at the current shed now as it looks kinda like a diamond down the screen, if you look at that, the right-hand point on the right-hand side of it, if we could get the line that would push out to about there, that would be awesome, but it doesn't interfere with that catch basin, uh, it could still give the city plenty of, uh, access around that as well too, but that was one thing after Ken sent us, you know, we kinda went and walked it and had some tape measures out there too and if that's an option, we would be interested in that.
Yeah, on either side. I would say we would go out there with the surveyor and, and take a look at again what would be, um, the best location for that corner with the ability for, uh, Pollock Works to continue to do their maintenance. And, you know, I don't know that another five foot or not is gonna be that huge of a difference, but, you know, generally speaking, you know, in that, that vicinity was what we were going for here and, yeah, we would wanna, we would wanna verify and, you know, stake everything out and see that that works, you know, for our maintenance needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess it would depend too if we do have an easement off of that property line. Where the shed is drawn on the map now made us feel like maybe we would be able to put a shed up to that property line. But if you're talking an easement off of that, then that five or six feet I think would make a difference to us.
The setback's just six feet, it's not significant, so depending on how we adjust that line, we'll, uh, we'll be able to draw that more accurately for you.
Sure.
I guess for the council's benefit as we take a look at it and as you look at people purchasing property, one of the things that doesn't happen often enough is that people get a survey of the property that they acquire and, uh, when you don't, these are the kinda things that you run into and you find out late after the fact that, uh, you, you, you don't own the property you think you do or in other cases you own something that you didn't think you did and so therein lies the challenge of not having, uh, those dollars expended to, uh, take a look at that at the time you buy property, so. It's kinda buyer beware and Bruce, I know in your banking world, you saw that probably many times.
Well, in addition, normal title insurance policies, which is pretty common, require a plat sketch as part of the policy and it's usually done and a lot of people don't see that, but the person doing that should've obviously caught this. Uh, if that was done, if there was title insurance or, but but since it's not permanent, it's something that obviously can change. Well, I'm appreciative that they, that, that you guys are willing to work with the city and that hopefully we can work out a win-win, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
So what's the next step?
I, I don't know if we would even need a motion just to, um, move forward with developing a land exchange agreement and getting survey work done on the property owner's cost. Probably a motion for that.
Yeah. Okay, I'd entertain a motion for that, um, to keep truckin' along on this. So moved.
Second.
Sean made the motion, seconded by Bruce. Any other discussion, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Good luck, guys.
Good luck, Kyle and Emily.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Do you wonder if something got screwed up when they, when they did the original plat, you know, there's a mistake and.
Well, sometimes they buy it, a person buys a shed from somebody and said they deliver it
Yep.
and put it over there and that's where they put it.
Yep.
And or they take the lawn tractor and pull it, you know, five feet.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the police department's strategic transition plan. So, who wants to start? Jim, Jim, okay?
Counsel, yeah, we discussed at the, uh, May twenty, or May third meeting. Um, it was brought up that you guys wanted, uh, a little more information about, uh, where we're at right now. Um, this, uh, continued memo. Um, just talked about some of those points, um, regarding staffing levels, scheduling, statistics regarding the new break police department. Um, I don't know how much you want me to restate with this memo, but, uh, um, I, we do have, uh, ten officers. Um, our schedule that we have set up, um, kinda follows the graph that I added on to that, um, to cover those high-peak time call times, um, where we're staffed heavier during those times, um, where, whereas my, the minimum that we would have is one officer on at a time, or one officer covering calls. Um, but as you can see, um, from seven AM when the calls start to kinda go up, um, through the day, um, all the way into the night, uh, even to, uh, one o'clock in the morning, um, those are where we overlap more officers and have additional officers covering. Um, generally we would have a, a day car, a mid-car, a dog car, and then also a power shift. Um, during the week, that power shift is three to one and on, uh, Fridays and Saturdays, it is six PM to four AM. Um, we don't have an additional power shift on Sunday at all. Um, and again, all of that was devised by looking at the, the needs for response times, um, and calls and, uh, that's why that was put in place. Um, another benefit of having that additional flex car, the power car, um, when somebody does take off uh, for vacation, sick or comp time, uh, we are able to cover that shift just by moving that person to that shift. Um, still within our, our minimums of one officer, but that still offers some overlap then in these peak times. Um, so that is how, how we utilized some of those, uh, stats on days, high, high calls on certain days and then also breaking that down into what day, what hours of the day those calls come in. Um, multiple factors beyond that are used in this assessment. They include the call load, the response time, call duration, proactive patrol strategies and traffic enforcement needs and other officer-initiated calls. Um, overall, cause, calls have dropped in twenty twenty. Um, um, and I was just pulling raw numbers out of our, uh, records management, um, when I was working on just pulling some things out. Um, obviously, most of that was probably due to our change in behavior for the public, uh, for businesses, um, as a response to the pandemic, um, with the executive orders and the stay-at-home orders. Uh, I continue to monitor this issue. The police department continues to perform these, uh, proactive functions and traffic enforcement. Uh, I can add a little bit to that, that, uh, the fact that as we've moved through diff, different stages, um, with the executive orders, um, people are out and about more, uh, we're responding to more varied calls now. Uh, some of those calls are, uh, are assaults, uh, frauds, uh, prim sex, um, cases that do need. do need more investigation time. Just a couple of weekends ago, we had a call where a reporter reported a drug exchange and a man with a gun at a gas station exchanging the gun to another vehicle. Couple officers responded to that. They've probably spent more than twenty hours, thirty hours investigating that, following up on what happened. Ultimately, it was not a danger to the public, but just following up on that to make sure everybody was safe and there is no threat. And then possibly holding that person accountable for making that false report just takes time and, and energy to investigate that. Another item that was brought up at the last council meeting was just talking about staffing levels per capita. The council wanted to see kind of a comparison of cities at or about our size throughout the state. That, on the backside of the memo, on page two, there is a list of cities. The city of New Prague at its current staffing level and population from 2019 is at about a 1.21 sworn officers per thousand. The average from the list is about 1.73 officers. And that's just a baseline comparison. Generally, this, this isn't a real standard comparison, but it just gives you an idea of how we compare to other cities. And when I, when I chose these, it was cities that were over 6,000 and under 10,000. And we'll see what our, our census comes back from 2020 yet. I haven't seen any even raw numbers of population anyways yet. Additionally, another concern that was brought up was if we could get more support from the sheriff's offices, respectively Scott and Lee Suer County. We do have a good working relationship with each of those counties. We help them with calls when, when they, when we're available. And they also help within the city when they're available. But each, each county uses the same criteria that we do to develop our staffing levels and what our needs are when they're trying to determine what they need for public safety and the cities that they serve with the townships and cities. Additionally, to those elements, public safety, they are statutorily required to provide a county jail, civil process, courthouse security, and patrol and emergency response to waterways and trails. Each county, as a taxing authority, must cover these costs and others. And again, generally, with my experience in the last thirty-some years, each county generally looks at what those needs are, even the statutory needs are, and they determine, hey, if it's a countywide need, then we should be covering that cost. Not all counties work that way. Some counties say, hey, because we have to have a dispatch center and we are dispatching your public safety personnel, we want you to pay for some of that. And they, they try and get other departments to budget money yearly that they pay towards that then. But again, generally, those work. I just added some of those numbers of costs, mostly for Scott County there, on what they have put out, 2.5 million annually just regarding their 911 dispatch operation and maintenance to the 800 megahertz radio system. All of public safety utilizes that. I was able to email each of the sheriffs and just got some, some basic responses from them. And Scott County did talk about some of the other things that they provide to us at no cost. They do have a K-9 unit. They have crime scene investigators that generally, they tried to have deputies that work day shifts, mid-shifts, night shifts, that are trained in crime scene investigation, that if we needed to utilize them to come and work a burglary and take prints or take other evidence, that would generally work. Depending on the crime, if they're available, they would come out. But that's why they tried to, to cross-train a lot of deputies working different shifts so that they are able to pull them off the road and do that. Normally, I mean, unless it's a, a major crime, they wouldn't call somebody out for that if they weren't already out on the road. Investigation assistance, we, we go both ways with that. If we had a large investigation that we were working on and needed assistance in taking statements or gathering evidence, they would be happy to come down and do that. We have helped them in, in that same process. We've helped other cities in that same process that if they've had a larger investigation where twenty, thirty statements needed to be taken, they may reach out to a couple of different departments to see if their investigators are available and could come up and assist with that. So that goes both ways. The crime scene analysis, they have a, an individual hired for that specifically. And she, she helps out as needed. Obviously, she works for the county. She's a county employee. But she is always happy to help us out if we do crime alerts or, or have a specific social media investigation or something. She takes off and runs with that and, and helps us out and gives us that information back. The digital forensics, when requested also, that might be our cell phones or computers that we take in on a search warrant if we're investigating a fraud or maybe some sexual solicitation. Any type of, or anytime we are investigating digital apparatuses, phones, we're able to take those, provide them to their trained people, and they're able to pull all that data out. They have several software programs that they're able to pull the data, put it into a report, send it to our investigator, and then he's able to sift through that information and look at what is, what's, what's related to our investigation and be able to report that within evidentiary system so that we can provide that to the prosecutor for prosecution. Scott County has also recently opened up a, a contract with a township that's in transitioning or is transitioning to a city. And in that contract, they, they just placed all costs for that, wages, fringe benefit, insurance, uniforms, equipment, and an emergency vehicle that covers the cost for placing that deputy there. So again, to the idea that the county may come in and assist us, they do that right now. It's difficult for them to come in and assist in just regular patrol duties or take up patrol time because they are mandated to be out patrolling their areas. I know Sheriff Lou Cannon just talked about, they need to cover the 24,000 people within their townships and areas with patrol duties. So it'd be difficult to have somebody at our area. Lee Suer County Sheriff's response was, if we request assistance, we will be there. Otherwise, we will continue in Lee Suer County as we have done in the past. So that was, that was what, a response from Sheriff Brett Mason. So I think, again, as a city providing public safety to our city, it's important that we maintain staffing levels to provide those needs. And again, at, at ten officers right now, I believe we are adequate to provide those needs. Any questions about any of the information in that memo? Rick?
Yes, I have a couple. You and Tim are counted in as two of the sworn-in officers, correct?
Yes.
There's really only eight patrol officers.
Yes.
And these population numbers, those aren't based on the new statistics that are out there?
Those, the population was 2019.
And then these other cities that, if you look, look at like Orno, there's a big difference in numbers and, and populations. You got 25 sworn officers on a city that's exactly the same size as us. Why would they need two times as many officers that we do?
I, I think that's a part of what their community is made up of. If they have a lot of residential areas along with a lot of commercial areas, they might have two or three investigators and other ranking officers to provide that. If they have a lot of industry in their, in their community, where it brings in more people. Even ours with the, with the school district and some of our employees, again, we, we kind of serve as a, a regional area in that aspect that, we have a large school district, which brings in a lot of people in it during the day, along with other, some of those other employers. We're not just our community. We serve other people that come to the community also.
Right, I see what you're saying, yep. Let's see here. There was a couple of things that, i- if you got the school cop, you got the investigator, and you got you, and you're really not on the patrol schedule, that gives you seven people for patrolling.
Right, yep.
And if you get into trouble, just by the number of calls, the county will come back you up for just regular calls and stuff like that?
They will, if they're available, yeah, they'll come to assist with our calls. I mean, so will other communities. We've had Jordan assist us, Bell Plain. When, when we had our 2014, when there was a possible shooter reported at the school, within twenty minutes, we had forty to fifty officers that were here, which may have emptied out a lot of cities. There were a lot of county personnel that responded. But those are for major emergencies that they would respond for that.
When you get into like a, a situation where you do have all, all the law enforcement are deploying into an area, I kind of forgot what I was gonna ask you, but it, my question is, is that with the seven officers that you have to work on your schedule, okay, and you're covering the same area and the same population, it just seems a little strange that, that they have 25 officers and we have our seven, basically.
Yeah, the numbers that I got for licensed officers came from the League of Minnesota Cities as a report. Those, those were actually based on numbers from 2016 to 2017 that were reported to them with 2019 population. But that was the most concise information I could get.
What, at what strangle point would you want to start considering hiring on more patrolmen? Would it, would it be under the criteria of we're not getting to the calls fast enough? Would it be under pending calls? You know, how long it takes for each call to get answered or whatever?
Yeah, I, I think we talked a little earlier about call, call number, call volume, response time, and how long those calls take an officer to handle those calls also. Even, even now, I mean, you can't, you can't guesstimate what staffing needs are on a certain day. You can by historical numbers and things, but hey, things happen and, and all of a sudden, several calls come in at once. The officers have to prioritize them and respond to emergency calls on other follow-up things they can get back to. So they do that every day on their job. Prioritize where they're going, when they're doing certain activities. Between all those responding to calls, actively investigating calls, working on follow-ups from previous calls, they're also asked to be out and, and do proactive patrolling also. So to your question of when I would be looking at, I don't know, we'll see what our population comes in as. But probably, well, I think in the previous memo, I talked about, we would have to look at our needs in twelve months to a year, or a year and a half, to see if we are still performing the services that we need to.
Can you see a situation where you would have to, like, let's just say that there's a situation at one of the bars and it gets cleared out, and you've got all these people in the street, and then you have county come back you guys up. Is there a situation where having them county guys come, there's a bill that comes afterwards?
Generally, not. If, if it's an extended period of time, I know in the past, if we, if we called out the tri-county SWAT team, actually tri-city, I'm sorry, SWAT team, made up of the three cities, Shockley Savage, Prior Lake, and Carver County, if we called them out for a situation, after four hours, they would start charging to the department then. But generally, if we just call for an assistance for an event and they come down, it's handled in two to three hours, they're not gonna charge for that. That's all covered in our mutual aid agreement.
Okay, and then when you get to, the other thing was the county, when you have a crime scene and you have to secure it, do you secure it, does the county, and then the BCA comes in? Could you just run by what part you would take in on like a big call where there was a homicide or something like that, where the whole, whole thing's gotta be secured off? What, at what point are you done with your duties on that, and then the BCA or the Scott County steps in?
It would be our investigation, start to finish. We would, I mean, in certain events, if it's a shooting or something, we would ask for assistance from Scott County or Lee Suer County, whichever jurisdiction it's in. And if, if necessary, we would ask the BCA to assist in that also. But no, I mean, it's our area, it's our responsibility, our jurisdiction, to carry through from start to finish with that. But like I said, if, if we need additional investigators to take statements or something, we could call for assistance for that.
Thank you very much, Jim. Sorry, sorry I had to interrogate you like that.
Good question.
I was gonna bring out some bright lights and really get the rubber hose out.
Well, and I, I know on May third, there was additional, I think, council concern and very valid, I think, regarding the, the proact, a proactive role in the succession of my position as chief when I step down from mine, or if I'm not appointed in January.
Keep it up.
But with that, I, I agree with you. It's an important position to be out in front of and, and it helps to, to drive the direction of the city. So if you don't have any other questions, I would turn it over to Mike for.
Bruce does. Yeah, if I could just, some additional questions on the chart, and thanks for providing the information. It's interesting information. The licensed officer number, those are all full-time equivalents, or is there a part-time licensed officer in those numbers?
As far as I could tell, they were full-time equivalents. And there might be some part-timers Um, and there might be some part-timers in there, 'cause I, I looked at the list and I called probably seven to eight of them, because some of them seemed high to me for them. Um, but, uh, no, I qualified what their current staffing was, and if their current staffing, um, justified it better, then I, I changed that number to that. But like, several of Little Falls, um, Wasika, um, Thief River Falls, there were several that I made phone calls to just to make sure their numbers were in line with that.
Every city is different and the makeup of their city, the size of the geography is one issue and the, how it all works. Orno ju- does jump out at that and does have Baker Park Reserve, which I was just there, and so there's a major camping area there, and there's different lakes and things that brings a lot of people there in the summer of that area, so there's some other things. I noticed on the cities that are in Scott County, they're all below the average. Then I, I wondered, do we, do we benefit in staffing because we belong to that, um, I'm not sure what the, the, the relationship is called, that drug task force relationship? Is that basically absorbs some staff time that we would have if we weren't part of that relationship?
No, we don't commit any personnel to it.
No, but if we didn't participate in it, would we need, would we need workers in a sense? So, our staffing is less than it would be apples to apple?
It is offset, yes.
Okay, so that's part of it, and I'm assuming some of it, I'm just guessing is the makeup and, and the demographics of our community is different than a lot of other ones with income and size and other issues and, and the type of policing that's done, it, not as much here as in some other locations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, thank you.
Jim, I'd like to just add, this is great, this gives me great talking points to people in the community that ask me about that.
Okay.
And that was one of the reasons that, I mean, I'm always looking for budget savings if I can, and that's why I asked the question, because we were discussing all the additional personnel that, to backfill and to start this process. But, um, this is great to see, uh, that we're one of the lowest ratios, um, and it's a great talking point. I'm gonna be sure to share that with them, but I appreciate you putting this report together, 'cause it answers a lot of questions that I think people in the community had, and, and it shows that we are really fiscally responsible, uh, in our overall budget with it, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, definitely look like we're running a, a little on the lean side. So, thank you.
I just thought I would get a nasty phone call from you for asking for it.
Nope.
Well, the, the, the whole reason I brought it up was because, uh, you know, you looked at the seven officers, and then one of them got, um, hurt, so that brought it down to six, um, and, well.
Well, that doesn't mean that Tim and, or the new sergeant or whatever couldn't transition to help out for a time period too, you know, or even Jim, certainly as a licensed peace officer can make, can jump on there and patrol.
An incident like that, though, where you've gotta take and put the two officers on, um, um, off-duty pay, you know? Um, that's gonna, that would really turn and twist us, uh, being so lean like this, so that was the reason that I had taken and it brought my, to my attention.
But all good questions, so.
Can you keep your badge when you retire?
I think that's all they'll give me is my badge.
No watch or nothing?
In a, oh, no. In a heavy plastic block, it should be.
Yeah.
Okay. Dwayne, for the benefit of the council, in response to the question, uh, a- as you take a look at the number of licensed officers and population, is, that's just a measurement tool that allows you to develop some type of comparison. But as you look at what's happening, is that there are different things going on intricately in each community that are different. As to the level of policing, uh, Orno, as you know, is, uh, from, uh, uh, the different cities that we've looked at, tax-based wise, is one of the, the strongest, uh, due to the, uh, the type of housing and, uh, you know, the, the residences that exist out in there. The, the geographic area that they have in and amongst the lakes also contributes to a more difficult policing, uh, role in the sense that it's not being able to drive, uh, you know, in some cities where you've got a good grid system from one end of town to the other, and it's easy to get around. The other thing that exists up in a number of those, uh, cities, up around Orno and that general metropolitan area out in that west end, is that there's a number of contractual relationships that exist. In some of those cities, they provide contract assistance to their neighbors. And so, I don't know specifically with that many, uh, au- licensed officers, just exactly how they do that, but I know from doing work and trying to ascertain comp, pay equity information and licensed, uh, salaries and all that kind of stuff, that, uh, it's difficult to find some of that, because it's either contractually handled through, uh, either the counties or, uh, other neighboring cities. And so there's a lot of that goes on, and so it's difficult to sit here and say with any degree of accuracy without checking with them, you know, why do you necessarily have twenty-five when, uh, as we look in this range of cities, uh, you appear to be quite out of the ordinary, and so other places might have much more advanced, uh, tourism and traffic issues, you know, kind of like, uh, uh, Shakopee has up, uh, in, in their domain with, uh, uh, the amusement park and Canterbury and, and other things. It is, it depends on what activities or things that are going on within that geographic location that might cause or be a contributor as to why they have the level of law enforcement that they have. So, you know, just because that grades out to, uh, a little over three officers per thousand population, you really have to, to delve into that and looking at, why is it that way? But I think the, uh, the outline that Jim provides, uh, you know, at least gives you a, a, a better, better information that, than not having it. And, uh, as, as it shows, uh, you know, we're, we're in the ballpark with, uh, the comparisons, uh, that he did in those certain population cities, and, and, uh, even without having the new updated census, is that we're still making the comparison off the same census database, uh, in the analysis, so.
So, I guess then the question on the table is the transition plan, and if we should move forward with what Jim has mapped out, so.
Yep.
Um, I know that Bruce, you had.
Which you had also asked, excuse me, that, uh, the next piece on the chief of police, I think Bruce was the one that raised the question that, you know, depending on how we proceed on this, uh, may necessarily impact, uh, the council's, uh, selection ultimately of, of Jim's replacement. That when you take a look at the internal candidates that would be left remaining for consideration for that chief's position, is that, uh, you know, we, we have, uh, three of the probably most experienced, uh, individuals in the department, but we've only had one that really has been involved in having significant supervisory experience, uh, that would typically come up for consideration when this, uh, would occur sometime, uh, next, uh, spring or early summer, depending on when Jim's choice would be made. And so, uh, I tried to give you information so that you could at least see what the job description was, that, uh, the process that, uh, we've used out of the personnel policy, that you, uh, do remain in the position of making the final hiring and approval decision of, uh, the recommendation. And Sean, I think you were on, uh, the council when we, uh, interviewed, uh, internally and Jim was appointed, that I pulled again out of the, uh, the charter, is that the council does appoint, uh, a chief of police, uh, in that process. If for any reason you went through that interview process with whoever might apply to be considered, uh, as part of the internal promotion, if for any reason the council, after conducting the final interview, didn't believe that we didn't have a candidate internally, then obviously, uh, you could turn around and we would re-advertise and, uh, go out externally to, to do that. But we would only do that if we didn't feel we had somebody that wasn't qualified internally that could handle that promotion. And so, yes, the numbers may be limited when we get there, but I think what Jim is trying to do, at least in this process, is to try to do the best he can for both the department and the city, that we have these items, uh, well underway, taken care of in position, so that when he does go through that process and you do interview and appoint at that time, uh, that if that does come from internally, uh, then we're all done and ready to move on, uh, with that new leadership. And, uh, you know, as we work and, uh, try to make sure that training is done and people are gaining the experiences, you know, albeit we try to do that, not everybody with only one sergeant position can have that supervisory experience, and so we can't just give that to everybody within the, within the department. So somebody will likely have a bit of an advantage in that realm.
Right, I, I'll just say that back when Mark retired and, and I felt that I knew Jim fairly well too, and he was the odds-on favorite to become the chief, I just thought it was very, um, beneficial and enlightening, uh, to have the opportunity to sit around a roundtable with the rest of the council and ask him some questions and just what his general philosophy was and everything else. And I think that just shows the, the, uh, residents of Dupre that we're doing our due diligence a little bit, you know, and that we're just not. So, I, but I'm fine with, you know, I, I like this transition plan, um, you know, whether or not we, I, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council, but I, the, the one time I was involved with it, six, seven years ago, I found it very beneficial to sit with Jim and a round table and just sit and ask questions and get his general philosophy, and it turned out great, so.
Thank you. Did you have any?
Excuse me for the interruption, Maggie, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Apology accepted, um, so, um, Bruce, I know that you had brought up, uh, in conversation at our, our last meeting, you know, in the event that this transition doesn't work as smooth, smoothly as we see it on paper. So I just, can you kind of refresh my memory on what that point was?
Well, I, I, I think I tried to, uh, ask the question, um, what, what could go wrong or, or something to that effect? And, and I guess my, my default position normally is to support city staff recommendations as much as possible. But it's also a responsibility of city council members to ask the questions and take the devil, devil's advocate side. So I was at, trying to ask and solicit ideas or things that might go wrong, principally what we talked about and what could go wrong i- in this, and I do support it, first of all, I don't wanna get past that, but we're obviously gonna have a new city administrator who's gonna have the, uh, have a say on it. And, uh, you, when the time comes, you may not, there may be a slight chance, even though we've hired from within in the last sixty years, it might be a slight chance that you might not recommend somebody from internal, internally at that point in time. A lot of things can happen, the city council might not approve who you recommend, or the candidate might not decide they want the position at that time. So, that was one of the things I thought that could go wrong. Obviously, you just came up with another one, you know, what happens if you're not here in, before this takes place, but that's all less likely. So I was really trying to spur the thought or thinking or be provocative about what, what are the things that could go wrong besides that? Because it is, it, a, a lot of times, organizations will like the new hire to be involved in the other hires. We're hiring new people before we hire the supervisor, in the sense we're hiring them last. So that, that is just a little different, and I'm not, um, advocating one way or the other, but so, just to think about that. So I was really more trying to provoke, what are the things that can go wrong that we can think about? And the risk of these things, especially when you're talking about, uh, how we're set up in the, in staffing, doesn't seem to be a big risk if we have too many staffers, if, if for some reason, and in, if we don't get it. If we thought we were gonna hire internally and we, we decided not to, we're gonna be one more person than you anticipated. So is that a big risk? And I guess I come down to it, that's not. You didn't really answer that question last time, and I guess I wasn't feeding you the right brainwaves to get into my wave thinking there, but.
Yeah, well, I, last meeting you said, how do you undo it if, if the plan doesn't come together? I think that's how you worded it.
Okay.
That, yeah, how do, if we.
At this, this stage of my life, I can't remember, you know, a lot of stuff, so. If I said that, I'm gonna take your word for it.
Um, but, well, and, and I think that was your point, that if, if any issue came up that it wasn't functioning, how can you undo it once you've done it? And I, I think the first transition is to put a detective in place. Um, that, that is an assignment, so that, that could be undone the day after that person is there, um, because that is a, a personnel management issue that I, I, as department head, I placed that person into that position and that assignment. Um, if, if there's an issue or concern with that assignment, I would change that assignment then. So that, that wouldn't be, um, the fact that we are gonna promote somebody to sergeant, um, prior to needing one and have, have some overlap of two sergeants at a time, that would be one of the concerns also.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't. Personnel management-wise, I don't know if you could put somebody into an acting sergeant position and ask them to go out and, and supervise like a first-line sergeant, um, because the idea is to get that person onto, or continue that person on night shifts so that we have night supervision on our department. Um, and that, that would be my goal to do that. Um, I don't know in, if we could do that for six, eight months of acting sergeant and, and be paying that person as a sergeant, but have a date out there someplace that says, either you will go back to the road as a, a regular officer, a patrol officer, or you will be placed as a permanent sergeant. Um, that is something we'd have to talk about.
Is there anything in between, Jim? Like a corporal or a first, second, second sergeant or?
Whatever to, whatever you tell me you'd like.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's, 'cause obviously, obviously it has to fit within a pay grade and everything else, so that would need to be vetted out, but, uh, you know, maybe that's the, so when the sergeant's on vacation, there's somebody that can step into that sergeant role.
Yeah, our, our policy now is whoever's senior on duty is the supervisor.
Isn't that the best way to do it? I mean, that's, um, if you go to like Jordan, I mean, the, the guy that, that's, uh, chief right now, he's, he was proman corporal sergeant chief. And that, you know, that's a very small force, you know, so I'm assuming that whoever had more seniority wanted to have at least a title. So, I don't know if we'd, you'd wanna go into that, instead of, can't we just, if we were to take a situation like, um, um, where you were gonna train Tim in as your replacement and then wait until that actually happens and then hire a sergeant and a detective?
Yep, um, I, I think the plan that was laid out talked about utilizing the summer as kind of overlapping time to be able to put that detective in place. And I don't, I don't see that as a, as a hindrance for this transition, that we could probably do that right away. Um, on the sergeant position or, or if you wanted that to be called a different ranking official for now, um, you guys could authorize that position, um, and we could do that in that transition. Um, the other thing I think that, that was brought up is some departments will hire an assistant chief
Mm-hmm.
a year before their chief is leaving, and, and they go through the whole vetting process and that's who their, they choose to be their assistant chief with the anticipation that they would be a, appointed as chief once the current chief steps down from his position. Um, so a lot of cities do that, um, sometimes at the request of the chief, or sometimes at the request of the council, just to be able to see what direction that is gonna go and how that's gonna work.
Um, that's what I was, I, I had that in my head, the assistant chief.
See, and the thing that I, and these are hypotheticals, so if name spits out, um, um, you know, if you, 'cause what if, what if we were to ended up picking somebody else as the chief, and then you got the sergeant and you're now, you made another corporal position, so you're gonna end up with it all on your hands anyway?
Well, and I think our discussion with Mike and I was, if the council wants to take an active role in that. Well, and I think our discussion with Mike and I was, if the council wants to take an active role in that now, maybe you could do that and look at having a sit-down with those that might be interested in the position to see if it would be an in-house promotion or not. And if, if it is not, then that's the plan we work on and we go with. If it is, we can continue with this transition plan and move forward.
That's why Sean's idea of?
But the downside of that is we also don't want to put somebody else in a position where the organization is trying to look at who is the true leader in the department. And we don't need them to, uh, to not be listening to the current chief and be looking at who that next up-and-coming individual is that's likely to step into there and that we have difficulties in perceived, uh, who do I need to really be working for in the coming twelve to fifteen months? You know, we don't need to start that too early. And uh, so in trying to size up and assess who the likely candidates could very well be is that, yes, we have uh strong uh feelings that uh there is an individual. And whether you did what Jim just described, whether you did something to move that individual or individuals to apply for an assistant chief with the, the likelihood and knowledge that that person would be strongly considered for the chief's job. Uh, the economic choice of doing that is probably a more expensive option than what Jim is describing under his transition plan, uh, the way that it's currently laid out. But in the end, whether you promote somebody to assistant chief or whether you promote a sergeant from uh that position up to the chief's job, you know, in the small organization that we have, in all likelihood, that's going to end up being the same individual for the most part, just because there aren't a significant number of individuals that have served in any supervisory capacity within the size of the organization and the department that we have. So it will limit those choices. And so we kind of know who the, the likely options are going to, to be that you would consider in that process. But as Sean described is that there is no question that the council can have a final review and input and uh interaction and discussion with that candidate since you make that appointment. And that, you know, due to the political nature and the interaction with the public and businesses and uh, and what have you, that I think you found that to be helpful the last time. And as you look at historically, that, that's kind of what has happened in here. If for any reason you didn't think absolutely that there was a connection and a fit, then your choice is to go externally. And uh, when you ask what was the downside, we'd be up one because we would have added that extra officer to anticipate replacing the chief. So then the choice is that uh if you went outside and you hired a chief and brought somebody in, and that will present some new unique challenges and issues uh to, to do that very thing. But then you wait and uh potentially deal with the one extra. Uh, you wait till somebody vacates a position and leaves and you don't backfill that position and you're back to your original number, if that's a concern.
Well, adding another patrolman wouldn't hurt right now at this point, but I don't know, whatever you guys want to do.
Well, I'm in support of the transition plan that Jim's mapped out.
Okay.
I think it's, for, for me, I think it's a good starting point. Um, and see how these individuals work out in kind of job shadowing over the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Because we can always revisit the assistant chief thing. I, I think there's some, I don't know, I think there's some value to that. It's my personal opinion.
And I'm fine with the transition plan too, with some minor input from, from council, just so we can, so it looks like we're doing our due diligence, but, and I would prefer just to keep calling somebody a sergeant than an assistant chief and have to give them another fifteen thousand dollars in the pay scale increase. But uh, just from a cost-cutting, their cost savings uh thing, but um, I'm, I'm okay with this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim.
All right.
Well, uh, Mayor, it would be appropriate if you would uh take a council action to support the implementation of the, the proposed transition plan so that uh we've got that as a basis as we go forward to work within the department on a number of the upcoming personnel uh items. Uh, then in the end, uh, some of those, uh, if there's promotions or what have you, then you would finally act on them in some capacity, but at least we've got your support behind us then.
So moved.
All right, Rick made the motion, I'll support it. Um, to continue on with the transition plan that was presented. Um, with that, are there any questions?
Just to, uh, just to clarify this, uh, the plan and authorizing the, these hires to take place, right? That's your motion?
Well, that's. Um, the motion is to go with the transition plan.
That was presented to us in the last meeting. And I, that would have included that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nope, that's fine. So, um.
I just want to make sure he, he knows, he's walking out here knowing he can hire, hire people.
Yep.
The process.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Otherwise, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks for your work, Jim. I would put out there is hiring that person right after the first of the year will, will only depend on when I decide I am exiting. And it would be four months before that, to get that training in. That would be the idea.
Okay.
Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is looking at granting regulatory flexibility to local businesses in twenty twenty-one.
Mayor, I'll handle that one.
Yes, thank you.
What you have in front of you tonight, uh, and uh, under consideration was a uh letter and inquiry from uh the Checker Sports Bar LLC uh asking the, the city to uh allow their business to uh continue having an outside patio area here in twenty-one similar to uh what was implemented, implemented in twenty twenty uh due to the COVID restrictions. Um, in uh, in the letter that we had from uh Rich's wife Cheryl, uh, it was based on uh the city council resolution originally that was adopted back in May of last year. I included a copy. And under that resolution, the council uh had authorized the granting of regulatory flexibility to local businesses to assist getting businesses, that being restaurant and bars, up and running by June one of uh twenty twenty due to the COVID impacts by lessening some of the local regulatory controls. If you remember, that was what was strongly encouraged uh by Governor Walz uh back to uh, uh, local governmental jurisdictions to figure out how we could uh modify, address some of our regulatory controls uh to try to help provide, at least at that time, was uh, uh, outdoor patios uh predominantly because there was regulations on uh a number of tables and the required seating and uh other elements. And so what we took a look at was instead of requiring the business at that time uh to uh, to go through the city's formal conditional use permit process, that by approving uh this resolution, uh, it aided and assisted uh Mr. Novak and uh the Checker Sports Bar in being able to have an outside patio versus having uh to normally have gone through the, the city's uh, um, conditional use permit process. Um, I think there were other uh, uh, other um approvals that uh I had put together that went to City Club, the Corner Bar, and Geisenbroy uh Beer Company uh that also received those that uh could have had outdoor patio or seating areas uh by providing uh certain fencing coverage, by making sure the liquor license uh was covered uh as an expanded premise on their existing liquor license, when in some cases, uh, some of those uh would not have been. In order for, and, and that resolution that you granted back in May uh has not continued to run since then, it actually expired in October of last year. So it was only for last year. Um, and if we took a look at presently, if we sent to Mr. Novak that, uh, no, we're not going to recommend to the council or give them an option on being able to consider whether they might want to continue or to attempt to undertake this uh, uh, regulatory flexibility, uh, he would be left with no choice but to follow the requirements in the conditional use permit uh process that I've included for your review that uh, uh, Ken would be normally working with. And I think you most recently saw this with Geisenbroy, that they are expand, proposing to expand their outdoor uh seating area. And they did go through the CUP process to uh expand it. Uh, I believe you approved it two weeks ago at your last meeting. And he's going to do an expansion kind of about uh, uh, you remember how many square feet?
Uh, seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so a, a, a large uh expansion for him. But if we required Checker's Bar to go through that right now, because no other inquiries have come uh up until about a week and a half ago, um, the application time period would result in that application going to the planning commission, which would not be until June twenty-third. Um, and then the planning commission's recommendation to you wouldn't come to you until about July sixth. And so that would likely mean that in the meantime, there would be no legal authorized outdoor patio or seating area for the next uh fifty days or two months. Uh, you've approved uh outdoor patios uh or seating for a weekend event or an activity in the past on either a Friday, Saturday night or a Saturday, Sunday combination. But uh, to try to attempt to get an expanded uh, um, area covered under the current CUP would uh likely result in uh, uh, the business missing out on a significant portion of the uh, uh, upcoming season. Um, and so in the alternative, uh, as well as talking with the city attorney and recognizing that uh, the COVID stuff is not completely over at this time um, and that we have Main Street under significant reconstruction efforts, um, which is likely impacting the business and, and others in the downtown area, that what we did is we put together a draft resolution for you to consider that was similar to what you did last May, that allowed that to, to be considered on a temporary basis versus a permanent basis. Um, I, I believe, and he can speak to it uh if he wants to, but uh, I, I don't believe Mr. Novak wants to necessarily uh install permanent seating uh as it will likely take away from some of the parking that he has to the rear of his building. Um, but I know in uh, any of the other businesses around town that have the outdoor uh patio, they've complied with the conditional use permits requirements. And so under those requirements, there is no temporary basis to set up and take down uh, you know, that type of uh, just simple installation of orange fencing and setting that up and uh, uh, controlling that, that he's uh dealt with emergency accesses. And I, I should point out, we've never had any issues with Checkers and Mr. Novak. So please don't in any of the discussions, uh, we've had good luck working with Rich and they've, they've been very compliant. So uh, that's been a good working relationship that way. So what we attempted to do uh in working with the city attorney's office, and he is connected in, in case there is any question that we need answered. And uh, Ken, you can bring him up uh at, at the appropriate time here, is that we prepared a resolution for your consideration to talk through and see what the council's feeling and direction might be on this matter. Uh, there is a blank in there as to how long we would authorize or allow this to continue. That uh, obviously, uh, in, in taking a look at this, uh, and uh, I've not talked personally with Rich, so I don't know. But uh, you know, our, our hope with the downtown project is that we are going to uh be sufficiently complete in the downtown enough that we're going to be able to, hopefully, cross our fingers, and I need to be careful as we say this, that we will have the better part of the downtown available to open up for some type or part of Dorjinki. And so the, the question in the back of our mind is uh, you know, how do we, uh, how do we deal with this now or in the consideration of the end date is the, you know, should that be before or after that occurs? Or when is the appropriate time? But also in the consideration, um, is taking a look at going forward is, unless the council does something to change the ordinance uh that would include a temporary viable option, we probably should, as part of this, be directing or you should be considering uh asking the applicant to uh consider thinking about putting in a temporary, or not temporary, but more of a permanent outdoor seating area, uh, because that's how you've dealt with all of the other ones throughout the community versus uh this process. And so this is more, in my opinion, as we work with it and with the city attorney, is that we've come up with an alternative to continue what was requested by the governor last year that seemingly worked uh, uh, to some degree and enabled uh outdoor seating to occur at a time it might not otherwise have occurred. And so now he's technically asking for consideration for this to be available uh for this year again as well. Uh, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Novak at some point, uh, after you have, uh, if you've got any questions uh that I can answer, whether you're, uh, he wants to come forward and make any comments, I don't know that. Um, but uh, hopefully I've adequately uh laid out kind of uh what the issues are.
Well, I'm certainly in support of the, what's being proposed here tonight. Um, last year was a hard year, this year, to your point, Mike, we're not out of the woods yet. The Main Street construction is, um, you know, potentially affecting businesses as well. So I would be uh supportive of moving forward with having an outdoor uh area for Checker's Bar. And um, my, my proposal would be to allow that through the end of October of this year in hopes that um, perhaps next year, something more permanent. If you so request, go through the conditional use permit um, process for something on a more permanent level.
I, I totally agree with what you just said, I'll second it.
No, she didn't make the motion.
I didn't make a motion, but thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I'll agree with Maggie as well.
Yeah, because it, you know, the, the thing is, is that Rick, Rich comes in here and gets the permits and stuff like that. Uh, he doesn't just go try it out on his own and everything like that. So he's always working with us on everything that he does. I would like to do it until, through October myself.
In, in response to what Maggie said is that uh, the action and the consideration is not just solely specific for one business.
Yeah.
This is opening it up for other ones that would apply. We'd use the similar process that we went through last year and uh, uh, it wasn't a, an arduous process. And uh, you know, the, the primary concern that we have to be uh concerned with is that uh, uh, in order to uh ensure that the liquor license and the insurance coverage covers that expanded area, that we have an updated map and that the insurance, certificate of insurance that we get covers that uh area. You know, at a minimum, that's the primary concern. But we look at uh, you know, the access in and out of there, uh, that there is or can be an emergency exit out of that outdoor seating area. But it's not to be used as the primary entrance, uh, the access point that uh, people can leave if there was a, an emergency that you need to get out of there in a hurry, that you can get out of there. Uh, Rich was able to incorporate and to fence his in by bringing in uh both music and a food truck and incorporating that within the fenced area. And so uh, to the best of my knowledge, Jim, we never had uh a, any difficulties. And so we don't have any reservations about offering this up as an alternative. And I think you addressed it as well, that uh, you know, with the challenges downtown, that uh, you know, the local business establishments have to try to find ways that uh, they can do things to help themselves, uh, be able to survive and provide uh, you know, business opportunities for uh customers to come in and uh, visit their establishments.
So, I mean, this isn't just the bars, it could be a restaurant.
It could be a restaurant or...
It could be for somebody needing, uh, additional expanded seating opportunities, uh, outside of their existing, uh, uh, business. Uh, you know, most of the other ones, Fishtail has, uh, uh, outdoor, um, Carboni's Bar and Grill, uh, the pizza place, they have outdoor seating. Um, as I said before, that I think I issued permits to were Geisenbrow. They're working to expand theirs, uh, uh, on their own. I think I issued it to City Club, uh, Corner Bar and Checkers were the four that we issued, uh, last year uh, in, in that respect. And, uh, you know, Corner Bar, that was just kind of for one weekend. But, uh, uh, she was looking at trying to do something and, uh, she had the fencing along the sidewalk and fenced in the back area of her parking lot. And, uh, it allowed access, uh, control in and out of, uh, people coming in the front door and then they could get in and get out of the bar and go to the, to the back area. And so that was workable. I don't believe Mike Rajidzka actually used his, but he had it permitted. Um, and then Geisenbrow, they never proceeded to expand theirs, even though they were approved as well. So, uh, we had gone forward to do that. And so the, the process that you see contained in the resolution in front of you tonight is, uh, is kind of an update with a number of wherethes that the, the city attorney's office liked to make sure that they, uh, integrate in. Uh, Scott, I don't want to speak for you, but, uh, they just tried to set forth the, the conditions leading up to the process. Most of the rest of it is the same. And then it's just a matter of inserting a date on page, uh, three or page eight in your packet, uh, under, uh, paragraph number five. Uh, and as Maggie said, she was looking at the end of October.
Okay. Bruce?
I, I support it and I would even go as far as doing it into next year. The council would have the interest in doing it into, uh, another summer season of two thousand twenty-two. My question would be, um, and maybe it's in here, I just didn't catch it. But does, uh, does this go away or does this stop if the governor's emergency authority goes away?
No, I don't think so. Scott, you want to chime in on that one, if you would, please?
There, there I go. Hi, hi, Mayor and Council. Yeah, no, it is not tied to an executive order. It would be only through whatever date you established. Last year, you did it essentially through the season, which was, I believe, October thirty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, Bruce, I'd support going through twenty, twenty-two, absolutely.
And I, I accept that.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Yeah, me neither. What do you want to do for a date?
October thirty-first of twenty-two. November probably tends to get a little cold and people kind of come back inside.
Of twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd support that too. So who wants to make a motion?
Maggie made it and I seconded it and we all...
Well, I didn't, I didn't quite make a motion.
She didn't quite make it. You're just too, um, quick.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty, zero, five, twenty-seven, zero, one. And with, uh, it expiring October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, there's a motion and second?
Yep.
Okay, Rick has made the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You're welcome. Thank you.
I think that's maybe something...
You gotta come up to the mic. Rich, you gotta come up to the mic, the podium. I'm sorry, this is all new for us.
So my, I guess just for, just so the council can start to think ahead of time that if I was to move forward with this again next year and, and would, and, and would be in agreement to go to a condition use for, if it's required, which now it sounds like it would be till twenty-twenty-three. But if that does come up and I would be using my back parking lot, which now parks anywhere from thirteen to fifteen vehicles on any given night. Now, if I was to take that whole thing away, that means that's thirteen to fifteen that are going to be pushed to the city streets. Is the zoning of my building, is that required to have all onsite parking or is that not something?
We, in the downtown district, we do not require you to have off-street parking. So no, that would not be a zoning ordinance requirement.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, good to know.
Hey, sorry to hear about Dad.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say that to me and Sally when I come and see.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Um, the next thing up is the COVID nineteen updates.
Uh, Council, briefly, um, just with the governor's, uh, mask mandate, um, removed, uh, we will be looking at our COVID plan, um, to, uh, take a look at our mask concerns with that. Um, we'll be meeting tomorrow morning, uh, department head meeting. So we'll look at that, um, probably taking that away. Um, I think part of the plan will just incorporate some of the staff comfort that it, we will still offer masks. And if they come into a situation that they're not comfortable with, they can don their mask or have gloves available to them. Um, but as we continue to move away from that, um, July first, things are gone. Uh, COVID plans are not necessary anymore. It would be around that time that I would look at council action to remove our emergency declaration then.
Okay.
To take that away. And, and I, we can talk about whether we're going to do that the last meeting in June and make it retro to July first or if we just wait until July sixth and take care of that then.
Okay. So right now, Jim, I noticed that some of the employees here tonight were wearing masks. Is that still required of the city employees? Or can they follow the state guideline that says if they're fully vaccinated, they no longer have to wear them? Or is that what you're deciding tomorrow morning in your...
Uh, well, that's, that's what we'll talk. But I think some people are still at that comfort level of just donning a mask and wearing it.
Sure, I'm not, yeah, they want to wear it. But I'm, I'm more concerned about maybe some of the employees that no longer want to wear a mask and find it cumbersome, especially out in the heat and everything else when they're fully vaccinated.
In, in talking with the city attorney, and we spent some time on this today, but, uh, based under the, the CDC and the state requirements is that likely we would move away from the requirement of requiring masks, uh, either inside and or outside. Uh, we have one area that we want to talk about, kind of, uh, uh, that because the governor's regs still haven't completely gone away, there are requirements under the, uh, food and beverage areas that inside those regs have not permanently gone away. So it's, uh, when I, when I say that, we're talking about the, the golf course, uh, there that they can only have seventy-five percent, uh, they can only utilize up to seventy-five percent of the available capacity, still maintaining, uh, the six-foot separation, uh, no more than ten at a table, uh, under that part of the requirement. But we're expecting that that potentially, depending on how things go, could end up going away on the twenty-seventh or, or the twenty-eighth. And then it's back to, but in there, that because we can't specifically judge if, uh, if, if we have it where, uh, patrons coming into the golf course, uh, uh, are not wearing masks and we don't know whether they have been vaccinated or not in that environment, that it can get to be a somewhat congested, uh, uh, area with, uh, the number of individuals. And in taking a look at it with us providing food service and or beverage service from a customer standpoint, uh, you know, we're talking about, do we do anything different in that environment? Um, is probably our biggest concern. Most of the other areas we have, we believe are adequately protected and, uh, screened and what have you, based on what we've done this last year. And so most of those would likely all go open and available. Ultimately, it'll end up being a personal choice if somebody internally wants to wear a mask. Historically, internally, as employees in their specific work environment have not had to wear the mask. But if you get up and, uh, look around the building or are in close proximity to another employee for whatever work-related activity, then both the, uh, individual office holder or workspace area holder and the person visiting would both have masks on. But likely that that would go away. And so what would end up being predominantly, at least in the case of City Hall, is it would be a voluntary choice whether you wore a mask or not. And in some cases, uh, and I'll use myself as an example, that maybe because some of my health concerns and issues, I might choose, choose to wear a mask for my own personal benefit.
Sure.
More than anything, which is why you, uh, you see that. And so I have other ulterior motives to do that versus the perception that came out from the CDC is that, uh, you don't have to wear a mask, uh, unless you haven't been, uh, vaccinated. Well, I have been, I'm, I'll admit, I've been vaccinated. And so my choice to do it is still my own personal belief when I have you. And then the, the, the discussion that we're having about, do we do anything different in the case of the golf course up in the, up in that area? That's the only other area that in trying to take a look at, uh, dealing with this, that, uh, uh, most of the outside workers and inside workers likely, because of the changes, would not have to continue to wear masks.
Okay. Just curious. And I would never fault anybody if they feel comfortable with a mask. That's great. That's theirs. I just want to make sure everybody has the same opportunity to maybe not wear one if they choo, chose to be based on the governor and the CDC guideline, so.
Uh, I did talk to the contracted manager, Kurt, up at the golf course today. Um, we're kind of on the same page. I would anticipate putting into the plan that food workers, um, bartenders would probably wear their mask, um, as, for a, an extended period of time yet, just for customer...
Comfort.
Comfort.
Comfort, that they're aware that, um, they're taking precautions yet. And I, I think as we see that wane a little more, that'll probably change. Um, but that could go out to July first anyways, yeah.
Okay. The, the bigger question, and that's why I've got Scott, uh, on and, uh,
He's still available.
Uh, would want to bring him in is that, uh, Scott, is that I've laid in front of the council tonight what you provided to, uh, us, uh, on the May twelfth memo from, uh, Mr. Saethy, the Assistant City Attorney, uh, within your, uh, ranks, is that in the discussion of, we're still technically operating under those emergency resolutions from last April, that you have not had us vacate those as of yet, but that the council came back to meet in person tonight. And we've, as you can see, uh, continued, uh, a, a parallel, uh, connecting link to go-to meeting, uh, to try to have that involvement. But in taking a look at trying to, uh, uh, involve or make decisions about moving forward with this, uh, um, how would you advise the council as we take a look at this? When does that need to change? We've also got to give advice to our boards and commissions about whether they can come back in person now as well. Um, because under the existing resolution that we have under the emergency ordinance by the council choosing to go electronically, that also was a mandate to those boards and commissions to do that as well. So with them coming back in place, does that now mean we can authorize the, the EDA, the Planning Commission, the Utilities Commission, the Golf Board, all of those other ones to start to come back into, uh, face-to-face meetings? Or where, or how are you, uh, suggesting that we, uh, handle this transition in light of the, uh, actions last week by the governor and with what's yet to come here, uh, the, uh, the end of the month?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Um, it, the basic idea right now is to move towards the in-person meetings. If the council's making that decision, the boards and commission should also be going to that direction. Right now, um, you are really in sort of a hybrid mode because the governor's executive order still strongly encourages, um, electronic meetings. Now, there are a number of communities that have gone to in-person meetings. I think that's fine. I think that's where everybody's going. And I think the governor will modify that direction very shortly, if not by the end of the month, because that's when that's, uh, it's supposed to be discussed again. But he does, in that order, also state that it is best to keep open lines of communication with persons who cannot or are not comfortable attending meetings and having some hybrid mechanism to have electronic and remote access as well. So you're doing exactly what I would recommend you do. And I think that's the same advice you should be passing on in moving all the boards and commissions towards at this time as well.
That's challenging. That, that is going to be a little challenging to be able to, to try to do both for each and every board or commission.
Yep, I understand. And, and it may not be possible. I mean, the reality is it may not be and you can only do what you can do. But if you're able to do it, that's the suggestion. I have some communities that are doing that. Others frankly are saying they're still going to meet electronically. So there's, there's all over the board on what other communities are doing, uh, throughout the state. So whatever you can do that's the most expedient and easiest for people to participate, that's what you should try to do. And if it means you can't provide the remote access as well for some of the boards and commissions, that's just the reality of how they're set up. So that's unfortunate, but that may be the reality.
Okay. Well, I think during our interview process of interviewing everybody before the boards and commissions, uh, this past week or two, I think everybody was pretty happy just to be able to take the mask off. And there was a lot of, you know. And as far as the Golf Board or even the Planning Commission that meets up here that I sit on, we have a lot of things in place. Maybe we could still even utilize this if somebody can...
I think Planning Commission would be the easiest.
Yeah, and then Golf Board, I, we could take over that lower level of the clubhouse and space six feet apart if people felt uncomfortable or whatever else. But I'm unaware of any of them. They're all ready to get back into the personal, uh, face-to-face meetings. But, um, certainly if there's people that are worried about it, I...
Does the Park Board meet up here too?
The one time that we did meet, it was here and it worked out really, really well.
I think we'll continue to meet up.
Okay.
Should we hold the Golf Board meeting up here?
It could.
Okay.
The, the issue is having somebody operated. I don't know, Mitch is going to give up every evening for that, but...
But we'd only need Mitch for like the Golf Board meeting if somebody felt uncomfortable, right?
To have, that's where the, the difficulty is tying in the go-to meeting and having somebody switch back and forth, yeah.
Right, but if everybody on the Golf Board's fine with it, I don't see a reason that we'd even have to have Mitch here, you know?
Unless it's the public, right?
Unless it's...
The public's still an issue, Sean. That, that's what I'm getting at. The governor's recommended that you allow some access for public that are uncomfortable attending. Even if all the board members are fine.
Okay.
That's the recommendation. Again, not cut in stone, not the law, but it is, it is, you know, candid suggestion.
And, and therein lies kind of the bit of that challenge is that, uh, uh, I think EDA, the Golf Board, uh, for the most part, I think historically, those two boards typically don't have much in the way of outside public attendance. It doesn't mean they can't. And, uh, in getting those reset up, uh, the, the challenge is, is trying to run the duplicate, uh, um...
Yeah, sure.
Go-to meeting at the same time you're trying to run that meeting because we don't have just a technical staff person to, uh, uh, that we can put back there to, to run for each and every board or commission meeting. And so the abilities that we might be able to do it with some, uh, only because, uh, Ken has knowledge, uh, from maybe both Planning Commission and Park Board. You know, he's able to, may, able to maybe do that. In the case of EDA, I certainly can't. And, and Golf Board, uh, Kurt has been doing the, the go-to meeting, so that might be a possibility. Um, so, uh, in, in some, we might be able, in some, we, we might not. And so, uh, I, I can't sit here and say that we, we can do it for everybody. But we wanted to make sure you at least heard what Scott's advice was. And so it's not an absolute, we must do that. But we need to try to take a look at that and see if that's feasible or plausible, uh, and what that might entail.
Is the issue only, or, or is the issue only if, if you have such a public interest that you're, uh, above the capacity limits of your space? Or is it that you have to provide technical, uh, access for it? Because in a practical matter, none of these commissions are going to have, have had public interest where we... have had public interest where we've had that many more than a room would fill. So then the practical difficulties, if for some reason you'd have so many people come, you have to cancel the meeting because you can't provide the public.
But there might be some people that are not comfortable even coming.
Right. I guess that's my question. Do you have to do the technology regardless if you have the facilities to invite the public?
Scott, you want to answer that?
Yeah, no, I will answer that. There have been some changes, statutory, and there are a couple of things that come into play August 1st. But to answer Bruce's question directly right now, no, you're not required. And if you're not doing an electronic meeting and you're simply doing an in-person meeting, you would not have to provide that access. It's only been a strong suggestion throughout the pandemic time. And I think the governor will reiterate that. But it is not something he said as a mandate at this point.
Do we need to take any action?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Not right now.
We just wanted to make sure that we brought you up to speed on it, that we're going to try to revise through our discussion to make sure that we can communicate our internal policies to our employees and to alert the public as well that we will no longer be requiring masks to be worn in the city's public buildings. And that in the one situation, we may go a little further, that being with the Golf Course, to try to require things of our employees there that we are different in doing with any of the other departments or service areas that we have within the city for the reasons that we've already discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the board and commission appointments. So I think I got everything right when I passed it on.
Yeah, I think you do too.
And then I had one question because Jason Thessing, Thessing, he stated that he worked at the Golf Course. And I asked Mike about it, and somebody can't be an employee and serve on a board. So we still can appoint them with that caveat.
Well, you'd have to appoint with the condition that is in the city ordinance under board and commission members. And I wasn't alerted to that till late this afternoon.
Yeah, I forgot about that one.
That that was even an issue. And so you'd have to probably have a conditional selection or appointment of that individual that, under the requirements, if he is employed, he would either have to, if he wants to, be able to accept the appointment. He would have to discontinue that work, which I think I was told that he is one of the mowers at the Golf Course. Or if he wants to continue doing that, he would not be able to accept the appointment. And so that's a choice that he would have to make. And I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
I wish we were knowing that too, because we still have that Thomas Ebert.
Well, but it was my understanding, he was only interested in the one board, which was not the Golf Board.
Right. And then he didn't show for his interview.
I don't think it's going to be an issue when he's told that. I don't think so. Because he said that he just helped out here and there.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah, he'd probably want to.
I think he just liked to hang, he liked to hang around the golf.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand you worked there one day a week.
Is that what, okay, one day a week?
But if that's, if that's the case, he would not be eligible for you to appoint. And so it sounds like the choice is really, you know, you could make a conditional appointment, subject to verifying the employment, and that the choice rests with him.
Yep.
You'll appoint him if he's no longer employed. But if he wants to stay employed, then he would not be able to accept the appointment to that board.
Sounds good.
Yep, I think that's the way to go.
Okay. So these are the appointments in front of you. I would take a motion with that condition to appoint the list presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rick made the motion, seconded by Sean. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. So the consent agenda is laid out. If there's no questions on any of these.
I just had one quick question. On the accounts payable under tech support, page one, there's a Scott County Treasurer annual assessor fee of $41,800. I don't know if that is under tech network in error.
Oh, that's, that's the contract that we have. That's not in the right location. That should be under assessing.
Okay.
That, that is our annual contract with the Scott County Assessor for our assessing fee for 2021.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just was questioning the.
Yeah, it should not be under tech network. It should be under the category of assessing because we have that built into the budget.
Okay, and then I have, oh, no, I don't have anything else for the consent agenda.
And Mira, I have a clarification just to point out that I don't know how close attention you pay, but the page numbers on the minutes, as they're highlighted, are not correct. And we will take care of those being adjusted when we put them into the final booklet that they just got arranged in a different order. And so disregard the page numbers. I didn't really think you paid that much attention to them, but I just wanted to let you know that those are not quite aligned the way that they should be. Otherwise, all the rest are ready to go.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie made the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Moved to adjourn?
Motion carries. So Maggie, do you have any miscellaneous?
I had a question for Mike, and that is on the Central Plaza. And if Kaye Wilcox has been in contact with you or any of the other members of moving forward with meetings or if there's been any discussion at all?
We have, we have a draft engineering proposal. We've been in touch with Kaye that that's been developed. And so now that we're able to meet back in person, we need to talk about that with the council as far as being able to take a look at the actual next steps needed to be able to work with the engineer, to be able to work with her committee to formally do the design of Central Plaza, as well as trying to stick some monies in the bonding budget to potentially deal with the development of that. Rotary has gotten, they have all of the commitment for the clock. So that is in place, but it's putting together the rest of it. That, that's kind of been sitting on the edge. And we're now ready to kind of hopefully bring that forward in the process that I think from 14 months ago, that had we not canceled that first meeting in April, is.
Yeah, that was going to be the presentation.
That was going to be the presentation back then when we.
Right, yeah, because.
So we do need to get that back in front of the council and begin to take a look at that.
Yeah, because I don't even think that the design has been finalized because I'm also on that, on the committee, so we still didn't. But the work that was done to date was going to be presented to council. All right, thanks. That's, I just wanted to make sure that we are starting to move on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, I have two quick things. One, I don't think Bruce is still on here, but either maybe Matt or Ken could shed some light on it. But apparently they're working on the lighting down by the depot and that little chunk where the new concrete has been laid. Is there an update on that? And once that lighting's in, are they going to move that, those barriers up to allow access, street access to the depot and scuzatjeks and?
I can take that one. The plans are to open it up as what we call a very soft closure at 21 Main Street on Friday, as long as the weather cooperates and the lights work at the way we expect them to. It'll be opened up all the way up to, on the east side of Second Avenue Southwest. So if you pull in there, you cannot get onto Second Avenue Northwest, but you can get on to, if you want to exit out of there, you can exit out to the south on Second Avenue Southwest. So the plans are again on Friday, but it will be a soft closure. It will not look anything like holiday on the east side of town. It's going to be two driving lanes, just to really discourage any semi-drivers to drive down that area.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
It's really mainly just for the business areas, just so we can get access a little bit more to those businesses.
Perfect, thank you. And then I had one other quick question. I had a resident ask me, there is a, I'm not sure if there is an ordinance, but is there an ordinance on trash cans being out front of houses? Or they're supposed to be either inside the garage or on the side?
We have an ordinance for that, but we've never enforced that. But we actually, it actually is part of the refuse code.
Okay.
City code, so.
So this person was concerned, they've seen more and more trash receptacles and overflowing and whatnot in the city neighborhoods. I don't know, maybe there's just some, we could put it in our newsletter or something just as a reminder, friendly reminder that they, what is the rule exactly? They have to be in the garage?
It actually says that they need to be screened fully or in a building.
Okay.
So that we can just roll a reminder to.
They've been violating it for.
Be a good neighbor and keep it looking more present.
Yeah, yeah, so I told them I'd.
But we allow semis to be parked in driveways. I don't get it.
That is a good comparison.
Maybe we could make that just a, or just a monthly little reminder and just point some of those little ordinances out about maintaining and whatnot. I don't think we have to go all hardcore and start writing tickets, but.
Even make some posts on Facebook.
Yeah, sure.
There you go.
Okay, great, thank you. That was all I had.
I'd make the motion to adjourn, but.
We got, we got a few more people here. I don't have anything, but go ahead, Bruce.
A couple of things. The County Assessor reminded me, over a year ago, I think you invited the County Assessor or someone to our meeting one time. And I thought that I'm interested in that kind of thing. So I don't know if the council would be interested in inviting them again to talk. And the reason, I guess, I have some questions of them is that I just noticed that our commercial valuations went down actually last year, even though we had more new properties that caused the macro number to go up. But, you know, our residential values have gone up, but some commercial numbers, as I looked at some properties, actually went down last year. So, and I imagine that's, might be COVID related or not, but that, I was just curious. But I appreciated when we had them talk, or him, I think it was at the time.
I do remember that. Didn't we have questions for you?
During budget time, because their budget continues to increase pretty substantially every year, which is passed on to us. And I'd just like to get the question of.
I'm with you on that.
If they're doing their fiscal responsible county.
Yep. So invite that guy back in from Scott County.
I don't know who that would be.
Yeah, I know. So is it the consensus of the councils, you'd like to have that again? Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure.
Okay, and that's Michael Thompson from Scott County. And there is a different one from La Sure County. Are you wanting to?
Scott County was the one that we were talking about, yeah?
Yeah, that was the one that took a pretty big increase, if I'm not mistaken, in the budget.
I think Michael Thompson presented it all.
I can see if I can find a way to, to get them to do a joint presentation. The challenge will be finding out is that are they now out and attending in public meetings? Or are they dealing with electronic presentations? I don't know that, so I will have to find that out because there are still some from the private sector that are not allowed to go out into public meetings and that they only can connect in electronically.
Correct.
So I would need to, to find out that, I'll see if I can call and see what kind of scheduling we can put together to see if we can make that happen.
I don't know, is it fair to say if you can't get them here to do it? I mean, after July, they're going to lift all these enemies, so.
I'm sorry?
What kind of hurry do you have to be in? In July, they're pretty much going to get rid of all of these restrictions. So he can, he can show up in person after July.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see.
Secondly, I would give a shout out to the Newbury Times. I like their feature of the police department. It's a very impressive group of staff you have there, Jim. And you look particularly well also in that picture, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you for your service and your staff.
Does that mean that he hasn't looked well before this?
No, I just want to add on to it. I'm going to reaffirm that. And also to the EMS crew, thank them for their work they do at North Memorial and their service to the city as well.
And a reminder that the EMS have their birds and brats and burgers on the 21st.
Yep.
At noon.
And I'm not sure if you were going to ask for debriefing on the meeting as far as the technical parts of it, or I'm just going to chime in a couple of things. I don't know if we can, if this gets higher or not. It would be nice for me if it was a little higher.
You're talking like physically?
Yes.
Higher? We can tilt the screen more like that, but the reason that it's set that way is for glare purposes. When you start moving it higher, you get more glare. Then we're blocking view from that camera back towards you guys at the podium is the other thing that comes into play. It's too high. It's kind of the reason it was designed that way.
Maybe closer?
Then it would cut the bottom of it off.
Well, the issue is we have to lean over, at least I do maybe, to see the whole screen or parts of it.
Yeah.
We can push it forward a little bit.
Then that.
That would actually make it worse.
Worse because it cuts the bottom off.
And I noticed when we were sharing this, or when, when a screen is shared, it takes over the screen, so we're not seeing the person talking. And I don't know if there's the ability to split the screen so we, we still can see the person talking because.
No split screen, you're talking through the go-to meeting.
Yeah.
You can, it'll get, but what they're showing you will get so small, you won't be able to see it. So I mean, it's the fine line. Do you want to see their face or do you want to see the document in the lines? I mean, like with, I did find. Matt, do you want to, can you share a document quick? I don't think I can.
Well, you know, in our case, we have the documents in front of us, so that's not that important that we see another set of documents.
But you are also.
We're showing the public.
You are also showing the public. So you have to appreciate the fact the public only sees it on the computer screen. So I mean, if your concern is at all, exactly, you can see it somewhere. I don't know, it's whatever you guys want.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Make the document smaller, but then if I'm watching on YouTube, I can't read the document. And I can't know like when Ken's pointing out lines here or there. I'd be, prior to this, I would have just been focused on screen itself. And I wouldn't have gotten any react, me at home would have got no reaction to anything. I probably should have talked into a mic since I already got a bridge for this.
Oh, you mean you're talking, you have everything on your screen one time? You're looking at the council, the talk, the person talking plus the material? Is that what you're saying?
The feed that's going out right now is what you're seeing on the screen.
This is what somebody at home sees right now.
Oh, okay.
This little screen. That's why I blocked it off in your eyes. I could split it half and half and you could get a better, I mean, it's the give or take. Do you want to see the person talking or do you want to see what they're presenting? And it's not just you, but the audience at home, which, fun fact, we had upwards of six people on YouTube watching. So it's kind of that fine line. I mean, we can go, if you guys prefer to see the person in less of the presentation, I, that's as simple as drawing, you know, it's going to, I can set it to like the two split screen. And I can slide it back and forth, one gets bigger, one gets smaller. So it's really a matter of what you guys prefer to see.
Yeah, I don't really have a good knowledge of what the person at home is seeing. This screen is so big that if you cut it in half, we could still see the material and the person, but.
I mean, if you kind of go one, I mean, when you're done, this will be live on YouTube. You can go watch it, watch and see exactly what the person at home saw.
We're a little bit, kind of seeing what will work.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, to see if there's options or ability to do it.
I'll go back and watch too and just kind of see, okay, did that kind of work out? And I know I asked Matt during the meeting what it was looking like on his end, just through go-to meeting. And I mean, that's kind of a quibble gather and.
And then are the speakers, can you adjust them individually or are they all or nothing?
You guys don't hear yourself in those speakers, otherwise you'd get feedback, is my understanding of how that was set up. So we hear you very clearly out here. And then through the system as well on the recording.
But you can't adjust the. But you can't adjust the volume of them?
He can turn up the sensitivity.
Who do you want adjusted? The people coming in on the computer? Not that I figured out, I tried adjusting it. It's my understanding.
Is that just through the go-to meeting?
The go-to meeting, which is coming into this computer, is what it's recording. And I tried to change the volume, and it did not adjust. I turned up both the computer volume, so. There's got to be a way to do it, but on like.
I'm not really thinking about it on that level. I'm just wondering if this speaker itself, if you can adjust this speaker.
Well, like, I can mute you, Bruce.
Okay. I just want to know what the capability is, is.
I guess I'm, yeah, I guess I'm interested, how much are you hearing from the outside? Is it, is it seem too quiet for you out there?
I thought it worked out perfectly. I just thought it was too loud at the beginning, because the speaker's right here.
Just hearing other people talk is coming loud through those.
Well, a little loud for me.
At first it was, I mean, when they, when you first were.
You, it's probably.
It's the remote people are loud.
Yeah.
I thought Kavanaugh came off very loud, and that's when I started to adjust, try to adjust his down.
Okay.
I couldn't do it.
Okay.
I never thought you guys got, I mean, did you think any of you came off loud when? I mean, to me, none of you came off loud, but like Kavanaugh was allowed, and I just couldn't get it. As of right now, I have no way to turn down that input.
Well, no one was loud, because Sean didn't hear anything.
Yeah, you can turn his mic off.
Thank you.
Well, Matt?
Sure. That thing's blowing.
The only reason I'm doing go-to meetings is just because we thought it would be nice to see what both sides look like. I would say presentation-wise, sound-wise, picture-wise, quality-wise is really good. I would say if you did split the screens, like I'm, just when Ken honored, I'm sorry, not Chris Kavanaugh was presenting, it would be tough to see if you split them 50/50. But that's just my input on how I'm seeing things, but I thought it was really good on this side of things.
Okay.
Good, Rick?
Nothing.
Okay, Chief?
I have nothing further.
Okay, Ken?
Nothing more.
And Mike? Oops, I forgot Matt.
The only item I have is in the back of your packet was the commentary that we got from Moody's that we did our, getting your review after they took a look at audit from last year. Not, excuse me, from the 2019 review of the audit that we had sent them, just sent them the 2020 after you adopted it. And so really, nothing changed in our rating as far as the, the AA3 rating. No change in that, that we've traditionally been going through standard and pours, but because we have outstanding bonds where Moody's was involved in the rating, we still have to provide them with annual rating information and audit information so that they can do their due diligence for the investors. And so as you read that, that, that was just going through our credit overview, and there were no changes in the reading.
Good.
Good, good.
It's very good. Okay, anything else?
No, but can I make the motion to let me go to the bathroom pretty soon?
Yes, well, you could have asked that.
You can just leave.
Now you can leave.
You do a point of order.
Point of order, he said. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I ain't doing it now, you told me not to be done. I moved to adjourn.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you. We had a lot tonight. A lot of good discussion.
That was a good meeting, though, guys.